All right, folks. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. So, the way we work this, if you haven't been here previously, is we have an agenda that we run through. At the beginning of the meeting, we do Audience and Communications. It gives everybody a chance to speak and let us know what you're thinking and hear from you. We do ask that you, if you want to speak, to make sure you put your name on the sign-up sheet so that we know when we can record in the meeting minutes who has spoken. So before we get to there, I'll wait for Josh to come forward and then I'll ask if there's any adjustments to the agenda. So, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to Audience and Communications. So, if anybody would like to speak, and we'll hold special time for folks from the Association, okay? So, no worries there. So, from the public, anybody want to speak? Just raise your hand and we'll call on you. Great. Take the speed of the meeting. Thanks. So, I'd like to give time to the Association.
I made ten copies.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Pat Fruxel. I'm a Williston resident. I'm also a middle school special educator on Sterling House. I'm here today along with my colleagues representing both teachers and staff as members of the Chittman South Education Association. They're also going to introduce themselves.
I'm Cara Medved. I'm a literacy interventionist here at WCS.
I'm Lisa Bispe. I'm a special educator on Sterling House.
Frank Foley, resident of Williston and assistant.
I'm a first and second grade teacher at Alabaster. Anyone else?
John Moutini, one of the custodial staff.
Chris Sherrill, one of the custodial staff at Allenbrook.
Josephine Levine, custodial staff at Allenbrook.
Paul Sheek, one of the custodial staff.
Deb Bullhauer, custodial staff.
Deb Laskerzuski, World Language.
Suzie Haas, third and fourth grade teacher.
Jessica Lamore, TA at Incanox House and Williston Central with two children in the classroom.
Bob Addison, custodial staff.
Okay. All right, okay. We would like to thank Board members and community budget buddies for the time that has been invested in crafting and refining the proposed Williston School Budget for the 2016-17 school year. We understand the work is not easy. With the passage of Act 46, your work has been made much more difficult. The CSEA joins the Vermont School Boards Association and the Vermont Association of School Business Officials in having concerns about the impact of the allowable growth percentage. Specifically, we are concerned about proposed staffing reductions that are made as a direct result of this legislation. Increases in healthcare premiums alone account for a majority of the AGP. According to the Vermont School Boards Association, 59 percent of the allowable growth statewide will be consumed by healthcare increases. The CSEA shares their concerns about the impact of higher tax rates linked to Act 46 on equity, quality, accountability, and transparency. This is an example of how arbitrary and disconnected the AGP is from educational qualities. We encourage you to continue to press for legislative changes to this law, including but not limited to the exclusion of these healthcare dollars when calculating the AGP. It makes no sense for school employees to lose their jobs because of the arbitrary AGP calculation. The CSEA shares the concerns of the Vermont Association of School Business Officials that full compliance with the AGP of Act 46 could lead to the dismantling of staff and program in a way that affects educational quality. We agree that the positive elements of this law related to school consolidation should be allowed to progress first without the additional challenges of meeting the AGP. We encourage this board to keep its focus on educational quality and to construct a budget that meets the needs of its learners. Williston schools are known for our outstanding quality of education and also for the positive relationships we build with our students and their families. These qualities depend on all of the adults who work in our schools. From classroom teachers, special educators, guidance counselors, related arts and world language teachers, to paraprofessionals, TAs, administration, cafeteria staff, and custodians, we all foster positive, meaningful relationships with our students, their families, and each other. Every adult who works in our buildings is an important part of our educational system. This means preserving not only teachers, but also paraprofessionals and TAs who provide critical services to students and teachers, especially in the changing Vermont demographic landscape where more and more students come to school with greater physical, social, academic, and emotional needs. We ask you to strongly consider the implications of any cuts that mean our students have fewer adults to support them in times of need. The CSEA encourages you to consider any faculty reductions based on a quantitative rationale and not based on the faulty assumptions of Act 46. Teachers facing larger class sizes without the assistance of paraprofessionals and TAs will undoubtedly face more challenges, and we are very concerned about the impact of educational quality as a result of these decisions. In closing, the CSEA is proud of the achievement of our students, and we encourage the board to craft and finalize a budget that recognizes the needs of the students and reflects the values of our community. Please consider presenting a final budget to the voters that reflects the true needs of our schools, even if that means going above the allowable growth percentage. Thank you for your time and your volunteer efforts in supporting a strong public school system in Williston. Sincerely, all of us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion matters. So, let's jump into our budget work session, and we'll start with a discussion of the budget plan changes. So, at this point, Greg, I'll pass it over to you.
Sure. I'm going to move up there.
Go ahead, move up and do that. Thank you.
For those of you who may not know me, my name is Greg Moreno. I'm the district principal. So, today, I will not re-present a lot of the items that you heard at the last meeting relative to our process for formulating the budget and the drivers that we used. I'll speak to them really quickly and move through those slides rather quickly, but then I'll try to get right to the substantive changes from last presentation to tonight's. So, there is our CSSU mission. Three big lenses that we're always looking through in terms of important decisions we're And then, very important slide here, a very important driver in terms of the decision-making process the administration used to come up with the proposals that you will see, is the work that we're doing to support learning for all our students. So, this slide is a big-picture enrollment trend, going back 10 years and going forward 10 years. In essence, if you look at today, about 1,050 students, and over the next 10 years, the projections indicate that we have a gradual decline to about 950 students. So, about 100 students over the next 10 years will be moving down. So, this slide indicates our current class sizes as well as projected class sizes if we did not make any changes in the number of teachers. So, these are our current class sizes. Well, here are the class sizes, actually. And the projected class sizes, if we did not make any changes in staffing. And as you know from the last presentation, there's a recommendation from leadership that we reduce one elementary teacher, and that would adjust this class size in third and fourth grade to be 19.1 students in a class. We do have some movement of teachers from one grade to another, and that is from kindergarten. There's going to be a teacher who's currently teaching kindergarten this year. It's going to move up to first grade. That was previously planned to follow a larger group of students. That teacher will go with that group of students. So, this entire table represents really a change in a 1.0 staff. So, we're reducing one elementary or recommending, proposing to reduce one elementary classroom So, there have been some ups and downs since our last meeting that impacted the target number. This number is actually lower than the one previously presented, which was $745,000. But this new number accounts for frozen ADM numbers and also reflects adjustments that have happened in the CSSU assessments. Unfortunately, when you net that out, it requires an additional $36,000 of reductions from the last meeting we had to get to the target number because one of the large reductions on the last presentation was an adjustment in the SU assessments. That now is factored in to this new number, so that reduction no longer is in play. Also, the hearing, the will of the board at the last meeting, tonight's proposal also has the fifth grade world language program back in, and that will, you'll see how that plays out, to about another $16,000 swing. So, that's about a $52,000 challenge from last meeting to this, tonight's meeting. And the following slides will indicate the recommendations to get there. And some of this will have changed at all. Just a minor change on this slide. There was an expected increase in revenue from the Imagine After School Program of $14,000 from this year to next year. After a little further discussion with the folks at Imagine, a safer and more accurate projection is a $10,000 savings. So, didn't want to overestimate in that area, so we made a $4,000 adjustment on this slide. That's the only change in this slide. On this slide here, we just have some adjustments in hiring assumptions. We discussed that at the last meeting. We have reduced baseline assumptions for teacher salary column shifts. So, in the original baseline, there was a certain number put in estimating the number of teachers who would move over in the salary schedule, move over a column. After some more work with the HR department, we came up with a number that we think is more closely aligned with what will actually happen. The savings reflected there. And then, I already spoke to the increase in revenue from the Imagine After School Program. So, there are no changes on this slide. This slide includes recommendations to reduce technology equipment, repair, and communications lines, and also some instructional materials and supply lines associated with consulting around Common Core instruction and NGSS transition. And as I mentioned to the board last meeting, not all, but most of these lines were specifically geared towards supporting teachers while we were making those transitions, buying large amounts of new program that aligned to Common Core that we previously didn't have. We're over that hump now and don't need the same kind of budget lines for now. A few years out from now, we'll likely need to do some more bigger purchases to get updates This slide is new, knowing that we needed to find additional opportunities for cost savings to meet the allowable growth percentage target. I did look at co-curriculars, had a conversation with the athletic director, and looked for potential reductions that wouldn't impact directly the number of children who could participate in co-curricular athletics. And both of these reductions align with that. So, we're actually doing some updating of uniforms this year. We will not need to purchase uniforms next year. That's why this is noted as a one-year pullout, about $3,000. And then, there's a second, there's a stipend for a second assistant softball coach in our co-curricular budget. Our baseball program runs with just one assistant. And again, after discussion with the athletic directors, we think it's an appropriate reduction to make. These items are $6,600. So, here, the big change on this slide is the reductions in teachers' assistants. Again, knowing that there was an additional challenge to meet, this, the number of TAs being suggested to reduce is moving from 2.6 to 3.6, spread across both buildings. And this will certainly impact the workload of remaining TAs, will help cover additional tasks, will also likely impact duties of teachers, administrative office staff. These other two items, the 1.0 tech lab assistant and the .8 reduction in library assistant are unchanged from the last proposal. Right now, we have 2.0 tech lab assistants, so this will result in a sharing of one person between the two buildings. And as I mentioned last meeting, we'll have that person over at Allenbrook more than here because their lab is used much more extensively. Now that we have a much more favorable device-to-student ratio over here, our labs are being used much less often, which we'd like to see. We're happy about that. The .8 reduction in library assistant, again, is spread across both buildings, so that actually will net out to a .4 reduction in each of those assignments. So, that will leave three days a week in each building where the library is staffed with a library assistant and two days in each building where the library will not have an assistant. Currently, we have assistants in both libraries five days a week. Okay. There haven't been many changes to this slide. The reduction of custodial staffing is still at 1.2. The health office assistant change in weekly hours has not changed since our last presentation. This last item, the wording has been changed. The last presentation, it was really targeted at summer hours. After further discussion and looking at this, this really comes down more to the number of contracted workdays of administrative office staff, and that it might not just target the summer. It might be spread out at various points throughout the year. But in terms of, there's only about a $300, $378 difference in this slide of further reductions. This slide has not changed at all since the last proposal, last meeting. 1.0 teacher, as per my slide, relative to class sizes. And then, a .4 FTE reduction in physical education teachers. Again, this is possible with the consolidation of schedules with the remaining PE staff. Will not result in a change in the number of phys ed minutes that students have access to K8. The numbers have not changed here at all. Okay, so there are some changes on this slide. So, after hearing the board's desire to maintain the fifth grade world language program, we looked again at the world language teacher's schedules to see if some reductions were still possible in this area, and we were able to determine that it's still possible to have a .2 FTE reduction and allow the fifth grade world language programming and the other world language programming as it now exists to still be delivered. So, it's only a .05 FTE difference. And let me just, before I go here, you'll see our running total up to this point is $298,000, so almost $500,000 in reductions. And if you remember, the challenge number was $678,000. At this point, really, at the point, the leadership team feels it cannot responsibly recommend any further reductions. This is the level of fund balance that we would recommend the school board authorize to apply as revenue for next year. Combined with the reductions that have been proposed, will meet the allowable growth percentage target, if that's the will of the board. It reflects a $28,000 increase from the suggested contribution that you heard in my last proposal, which was $152,000. Still in play was this piece about transportation, and I did not queue up the color-coded map that I had up at the last meeting, but I could bring that up if we needed to find it. And that is that the school board could consider the elimination of transportation services for students living closest to the two schools. What we looked at is a mile and a half radius, the overlap radius of a mile and a half between Allenbrook and Williston Central School, and then doing some consolidations of runs. We think we could reduce three bus runs, and these cost about $28,000 a run. So, if the school board elected to go in that direction, could be a potential $84,000 savings. That is not factored into any of the proposals. Feel like this is not, this isn't a leadership recommendation. This is really just an opportunity that the board may, to consider. What questions do you have?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, in the last meeting, we had talked about pulling up a few things. We talked about the cafeteria, exploring whether there were some potential opportunities there. Did we do that?
Bob, you want to take that?
Yes. Greg and I spent time with Scott, and we don't have an offer for you tonight of an innovative way to take money out of the program and continue to operate it as it is today. So, we came up short of possibly an expectation that we might be able to save money in that arena. The three of us don't see that as an opportunity.
Okay. Then, we also talked about CY, discretionary fund.
So, I don't think anything has changed since the last proposal. Bob gave an overview of the required pieces relative to health education standards. So, if there were pieces, so those, I would say, are nondiscretionary. So, if you decided to not pursue those, we'd have to find some other way to deliver them. But the piece around CY mentoring, the leadership does not suggest that a reduction be made that would impact the mentoring program.
Okay. And we're talking about $50,000, right?
Yeah. It's 46.
That's the Williston attribution directly to the mentoring program, yeah.
Yes. Okay. I guess the question, budget buddies, rest of the school board, how do we feel about that? And I very much respect the recommendation of the administration. I fully recognize the value of CY. However, we need, again, to think of the benefit of the whole. And how many kids are we talking about in CY mentoring? And I understand it's not a one-to-one. These are kids that require that support, and it's important for them. But so is the case for everything else. So, I just feel very uncomfortable.
I'm mentoring, I think there's about 66 in here mentoring.
Right, yes. Thank you. So, I just, I would like us to keep that in mind because in an ideal world, we would leave everything unharmed, right? But we're not there. And then, we have talked about potentially looking, and I don't know if this is the right time to mention it or not. Kevin, let me know. But I do believe we need to take a look at our administration staffing and whether there are opportunities there or not.
If it's the will of the board, I think that is, I think there's two questions there. I don't think there's, conceptually, anything wrong with investigating, looking into it. I think having an expectation that we could make an effect that helps the budget in this budget year is probably not realistic, given where we are in the process. So, if it's the will of the board, my proposal would be that we take this up as a retreat item because it needs to be discussed and understood, kind of what the impacts are. And I think we also need to take that proposal back to the superintendent and ask for, ask for some information, kind of give us a starting point, you know, how this would work and what we could do.
I just, I respectfully disagree with that, Kevin. I think if there is a time and a place to assess that, it's right now. And, let me just finish. And I also believe that just as we are looking into how we're going to impact every single level of our administration, we have an obligation to include from the top to the very bottom. And now, in my opinion, is the time to do it. How does the rest feel, please? I'd like to hear from everybody.
I think we should have, I think, I don't see why it's any different than any other staff. You know, we're just talking about a reduction of whatever FTEs we have from whatever number to whatever number, and if it's, the impact is not, you know, we need, what is the impact? If the impact isn't, if the impact is too much, then we can decide that we don't feel it's the right thing to do. But I don't see how it's, how it can't be assessed any different than a teacher or custodian or a TA or...
I don't disagree.
I don't understand. Is there something that I'm missing?
Well, as already covered, there's a reduce the number of contracted workdays of some administrative support staff. Is that not what you're talking about?
No. I am specifically talking about principal level.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we have three principals in two buildings, and I think South Burlington, Burlington just as examples, they have more schools, more buildings, and they're basically at a one-to-one ratio.
And they might have assistant principals, too. We don't have assistant principals.
They may, they may, yeah.
So, I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to just, I don't know, it just hasn't been talked about, I guess. And I think it's something that has been brought up in meetings and has been brought up with people that I talk with, and I think it just is something that shouldn't just not be, you know, it's no different than anything else. And maybe it has been looked at. I don't know, but it hasn't been discussed, that's all.
So, when we went through the hiring process, there was some discussion about it. Now, I frankly can't recollect what that discussion was because I wasn't on the hiring committee, but maybe someone who was can refresh my recollection about the decisions that were made at that time. And that may give some illumination. I have heard from constituents who raised this issue, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of making cuts to the principal staffing because I think an in-depth analysis is really needed before we make such, I don't want to call it drastic, but significant decisions. And I'm not sure whether, I don't want to make that decision rationally, whether we have time to do it in this current budget session. I'm not sure. I am concerned about maybe waiting so long as the retreat to take it up because it may really be of more significance and working effort so that if it is a matter of deliberation, we have enough time to deal with it before the next budget session. I don't want to be back in November asking the same question. So, those are my thoughts.
I would just add two things. I, I would just add two things. So for the record, I am also not recommending, nor am I saying that I think that we are overstaffed at a principal level. I was part of the recruiting committee when we were looking for the replacement for Walter Nardelli. At that point in time, it was discussed briefly, and we still strongly believed at that time that having the head count that we currently have was what's necessary to support our school system the way it is. We are the largest school system in Vermont, really, putting Burlington aside, right? That's a whole other world in itself. So that's important to know, but I just believe that, I agree we should not be making any decisions hastily, I, I absolutely agree with that. But at the same time, I just wonder, waiting all the way until the retreat happens, which really is not until May, right? At that point, the budget will be voted, whatever decisions we made in terms of cuts of FTEs or program supports, or whatever it is that we're going to end up with, it'll be too late. And unfortunately, for, I mean, hopefully, I should really say, you know, when, when is the, the government, I mean, the state, making a decision of whether or not the health costs? When is that?
Sometime between now and the end of May, when they leave Montpelier.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
That's like the best prediction that could be given, really.
So just as late. All right.
Call it like it is.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just, I just do believe, just like Kevin Broshue just mentioned, I don't, I mean, every, every hired physician in this school is equally important, and I think every physician should be assessed at the same time. And we should not be leaving certain areas unharmed. I, I, I don't think that's the right thing to do.
So if I just, I just want to make my, my position clear. It's not that I'm proposing a pushback to any of this, I'm just more concerned about making sure that we give it the consideration it's due, and also realize that we have work of the board that we already have planned between now and the retreat. So our agendas, although flexible, are tight, so if we want to do this, we need to consider that also, okay? And normally, we take on these sorts of issues at the retreat and build it into our work plan for the following year.
Well, I guess, I, you know, I think that if, if we all feel that this is important to look at, and we're at a juncture in our school system of maybe revisiting our numbers and the numbers of staff, that it's maybe something that warrants some extra special attention, and we figure out a way to build it into our spring agenda, you know? I, I'm with, I'm with Josh, I don't think it's, I think it's something significant to look at, and I think we need, I don't think getting it done by the time we need to go to print on a budget for voting is, is, is the kind of analysis something like this needs, because unlike our peers, our peer school systems in Chittenden South, they don't have multiple buildings where that requires some management, you know, instead of just having unique principals, then that's the superintendent sort of coordinating those two buildings, I would imagine. So maybe there is a unique, a different type of structure that we could look at, but I think that's something that, under the pressures we're under right now, I don't know that the timing works. So. I also think, you know, I, I mean, I know we've gone through some of these, but I'd like us to have, you know, to also just spend a little bit more time on the things that are on the table right now, and, and see where we feel, you know, dollar-wise, we may need some more room, like what, you know, we, we pushed back on the fifth grade world language, so, you know, what other things are we still uncomfortable with? Because I don't have a sense, without adding more to the table or to the plate, what else, you know, we're uncomfortable with. So I'd like to sort of go back to your presentation.
So maybe we can conclude this in this manner, if you guys all agree, since it sounds like it's the will of the board to pursue this a bit further, why don't I place an agenda item on our next regular meeting, which is in February? And although this sounds like bureaucratic speak, I think we need to discuss our process, how we want to do this, okay? So why don't we make that our agenda item, a discussion item for February? Is everybody in agreement?
I personally not. And, and I will say this, I, in normal times, we are able to follow our annual program spot-on. These are not normal times.
So Giovanna, give me a proposal, put it out of motion, and let's get this to...
I, I would like us...
I want the will of the board here, so I wanted to know exactly what you guys want to do and how you want to proceed.
Right. I, I would like us to explore a potential, I'm not, I, I don't know, like, just like, just like the exercise that has been done here of a reduction of point two, point five, point four, point six, whatever that is. I'm not saying, let's cut everybody, I'm not saying that at all. I don't even think that's the right thing to do. What I'm just saying is, we have an obligation to look at every nook and cranny. And if everybody is required to do more work because of what the AGP is constricting us to do, then let's, let's, let's share that level of pressure across the board.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that it needs to be us comparing ourselves with anybody else, I think it's a matter of administration getting together and saying, hey, you know what? Things are tight, is there anything that, that three or four, I don't know how, exactly how many people there are, maybe it's just Greg and Jack, or, I shouldn't mention names, but maybe it's just the three principals, you know? Can they get together and say, hey, you know what, I think I could do one less day if you could cover me here, and then, or whatever, and maybe there's a point two, like you said, or, you know, that would work out, I don't know, maybe you already did that, you know? But we just want to hear it, that's all.
In lieu of having Greg get in the middle of this conversation, which I don't want to do.
Which would really not be wise.
I think you need to be, you need to be clear that Greg and his staff have done that with every line, every dollar in the budget. It isn't as though they circled some things and said, no, we aren't going to review that. But, so they, they looked at every line. What, what you're proposing in, in our terms would be that you, as a board, revisit the administrative model that you've got, and see if there isn't an opportunity to do something different. If Elaine was here, she would say, don't draw the conclusion before you've done the review. If that's really the will of the board, she will present for you your current model, other models, and the pros and cons of both, and then you can make a decision. She would recommend you not, tonight, with one hour left in a process, draw a conclusion without having done those good steps. But, but do understand, Greg and his staff have gone through every line, there, there isn't, there isn't anything here that they haven't said, do we have an opportunity, both individually and collectively, to reduce it? But that's kind of where we'd like you to head, without getting into a little bit of trouble.
I think that's what I want to hear, because I just, I didn't, I haven't heard it, you know, and I guess it's been mentioned to me, and I just never saw, you know, saw it here, I see there's just no more further recommendations, but, you know, and, and, you know, I, I tend to agree that if we're going to change the model, then we need to have a much deeper discussion about it. But as far as, you know, yeah, I imagine there, okay, I'm not going to say anymore, I think I've spoken my mind.
I mean, I, from my perspective, the, the model that strikes me is going from however many TAs there are today to four, up to almost four or fewer. And that's sort of the model that, you know, I mean, as someone who's got a freshman in high school, who's gone through having a TA for every house, or a TA for every team, or part of a team, you know, I guess that's, that's a model change for the education of our children, and I guess I'd like to understand the impact on that throughout the system a little bit, too, because, you know, because it increased from our last meeting, so sort of what, what your views on that are, if that's something you feel you can share, if it's appropriate.
And I just kind of add, and also go back a little bit, but as far as a TA model, I don't know if that has been really looked through, I know there's mention that it would be spread out more, but you mentioned that if we went down to, say, like, a point-two reduction on all the principals, so one day less, a week, and everything covered, and that it hadn't been explored, has a TA model really been explored? Where now, only, you know, every other house has a TA, or there's, there's not, as you said, you know, the model today? Every house has a TA. Has it actually really been looked at how exactly it will work out operationally? And I don't want to say that that's being kind of just thrown in, or that going to a point-two reduction, all the principal staff would be thrown in, but I think everything should be on the table. But maybe, just to stick with the pointed question of how does a new TA model work, has that really been looked at?
Of course, we wouldn't have proposed a reduction without looking to see if we think we could make it work. It will certainly have impact. We haven't yet done the detailed work to say exactly, this is how we're going to deploy all the remaining TAs. But what I can tell you is that we're going to have some TAs that are assigned to individual teams now, that will have other responsibilities. So you might have a TA supporting more than one team, you might have a TA who's supporting a couple of teams now, have another element to their position. So there will be, there will be impact to, you know, across the board, but the idea is we're going to try to spread it as evenly as possible to minimize it, and we're going to look at the, the adult-to-student ratios in each of those houses, to make decisions based on that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? How many current TAs do we have? Do you know that number? We've been reducing by three point six. I'm trying to get the full contact.
I believe it's seventeen, but I don't have that number in front of me. I can get that number.
So I've got a few questions just to...
Go ahead, Josh.
...basic presentation, because I didn't quite follow everything, and I want to make sure I understand everything. Can, Greg, can we start off with understanding the change in the baseline delta between last time and this time? I didn't quite follow that. My understanding is roughly seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars was the gap we needed to close at the last meeting, now we're at six-seventy-eight, and here's where I got lost. And that seems like to be about seventy, eighty thousand dollars savings to us, to make it our life easier.
Right.
You're telling us it's fifty thousand dollars harder. I know thirty thousand's coming from world language. Walk, walk me, walk me through that step-by-step, so I can understand.
Okay, I'll, I'll start, and then Bob may want to jump in. The world language swing was actually about sixteen thousand dollars. Okay. But then what happened was, there was a change in the CSSU assessments that came in after the ADM numbers were frozen. So the target numbers were recalculated to take those changes into effect. So where, that reduction of a hundred and four thousand in assessments came off the baseline, ended up being a much smaller reduction.
So what was that delta?
It was about a seventy-three thousand dollar swing.
So there's forty thousand.
There's seventy thousand dollars worth of swing.
Oh, seventy worth of swing.
Right.
Okay.
Let me, let me do that one, hopefully with a little more clarity, but you'll tell me whether that, I land there or not. The, the, what, what occurred at CSSU was each board asked our office to make a guesstimate as to what happened when CSSU finished their budget process and took six-hundred thousand dollars out of their budget. We apportioned that out to schools, but we're using ADM numbers from last year to allocate those costs to each school, because that's how you have, you, the CSSU board has chosen to allocate their costs. That used to serve us well, but now that we have such large costs at the SU, now being allocated by ADM, when ADM numbers move, costs move. And in this particular instance, Charlotte and CBU have dropped close to eight percent of their ADM count in one year. And under an ADM model, they got to say goodbye to eight percent of their costs, because they didn't have the students. And those that were either increasing in students or level, and you qualify as level, picked up a lot of costs that I didn't foresee when I took the savings and divvied it up a month prior.
So, so we've lost seventy thousand.
Correct.
And that would explain arguably the delta between seven-fifty and six-seventy-eight. So that's, from my mind, that's a wash. So we got...
Didn't feel like a wash to Greg and I when we talked about it at first, but go ahead, yeah.
I'm just trying to connect the dots here. So we got fifty left, if you will.
Yeah.
Sixteen of that's world language, so now we're down to thirty-five. Where's the thirty-five, the gap in about thirty-five thousand?
It was a little bit of sports, right?
Well, those are savings that were made.
I, I, I can't do your math that quickly.
Oh, because we're adding world language back in, right.
That, well...
So we started, we needed seven forty-five in reduction.
Yes.
But as of today, we only needed six-hundred-and-seventy-eight.
Right.
But seventy thousand of that, savings that we had banked on before, is no longer with us.
Correct.
Okay. So that would be the same as if we had seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars we still had to cut, right?
Okay.
Yes, no?
I, I, I can't, I'm, I'm trained not to do math in my mind, I sit at a, with a yellow tablet and lay it all out in columns, so...
Is it, is it, let me ask it this way, are there any other unknown, as, any deltas?
Maybe the difference is, I'm not sure, because we've had a lot of numbers thrown at us, there's been some changes across the way, but the, the revised outlook on, before this last number, was not seven forty-five, but seven oh eight.
Okay.
So I think that kind of lines up with the number you're looking for.
All right.
Not sure, but I think, I think that's what it is.
Yeah, I just assumed you asked me to do that, and I'll tie it out in a, in a form that I'm comfortable with.
Well, I have seven forty-six, one seventy-eight.
Given to you on what date?
That was December twenty-first.
Right. And then on January seventh, we got a second revision, and that jumped it down to seven oh eight, where is it here? Sorry. Seven oh eight, one oh eight, and then we got our final numbers here today, and that knocks us down to what, the six, the six forty-something that we're talking here.
The difference between those first two is the state finally published equalized pupil counts in between the first number and the next number, so we gave your board chair a revision at that point in time. And then when we finalized CSSU, we updated it again.
They came within, literally within a day or two of each other, so I, I gave you the final, I apologize. What was my doing? So can we now walk through the proposed changes in budget cuts between last time we met on the twenty-first and today, so I can understand those deltas as well?
Sure.
Looked like we had about sixty-seven hundred bucks in curricular cuts.
Correct, those are new.
We've just talked about the teacher-assistance changes, what's the dollar amount?
That's about twenty-two thousand four hundred.
Twenty-two thousand four hundred?
Twenty-two five, twenty-six. Yeah, there at the last, yep.
Yeah, those, those notes explain all the changes. But I'd be happy to go through them.
Actually, I mean, last time we talked about, and it's on this page here, the, the first page, about whether it's no penalty or flat tax. And I know, as a taxpayer, I probably like no penalty, as a parent, you know, Williston resident, I probably like the flat tax, also especially if I factor in some of the discussion from last week about if you do the no penalty next year...
And my suggestion is, I'm sorry, I don't mean to intro�. I'm sorry. Let's do that, but let's, let's just kind of make sure we all understand what's, what's here first. So I want us to get through this, and then...
Sure, Greg and I would like to understand.
Yeah, and then, if we kind of have the, the understanding here, it kind of makes sense to talk the big numbers.
I have some questions that kind of talk about what we're going on here. So there was the TA question, I don't know, did you get it?
There are fourteen TAs.
Fourteen currently, okay.
And then the library assistants are also in the TA category.
Okay, good to know. So then my other question, they brought up the, initially brought up the healthcare cost increasing, it was seven-point-nine percent, I found in my papers, do you remember the dollar amount? I remember one-seventy-two off the top of my head, but is that right? One-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars?
I can tell you what the...
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm, I'm going to have to look at it, but I've, I've got it here and all the information I have.
Okay, because that would be really good to know, is we're making decisions, are we going to hit the penalty, are we going to not hit the penalty, and eat the healthcare cost, and hopefully change it, or...
I know that one-seventy-two number was when the what-if, because there was some conversation about legislation...
Right, yes.
...that would take the healthcare increase out?
Yes.
And how would that change our number? And so the what-if was, well, if the healthcare increase came out, our challenge number would come down by one-seventy-two.
One-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's, that's the amount of the increase of that seven-point-nine. It means that's how much the challenge number would come down.
So the more important number, though, is, so if we say, okay, we are not going to account for this, one-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars, that's healthcare increases, then we could take that out of our budget target number, in theory?
Again, one-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand is not the amount of increase.
Oh, oh, oh.
The one-hundred-and-seventy-two, is if they redid the equation and pulled healthcare out, the increase, our challenge number would go down by one-seventy-two.
I see.
Which is different than, I don't know the actual...
So we'd have, we'd have to make one-hundred-and-seventy-two less in savings.
We'd have to make 172 less in savings. I mean, less in cuts.
Correct, to get under the.
Okay, so that is what I'm trying to say. Thank you, Karen. You, you got the words for me.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's something I thought was important to note. So $172,000 if we want to just not cut that. And then also, annual fund, I asked this last time, do we have any better idea? It's $480,000 right now. Do we expect it to have a positive addition this year, negative? Bob, do we have any idea for annual fund?
Funds, the fund balance.
Yeah, I know. I can't, what was the first quarter? Probably, we said $50,000 favorable.
Yeah.
If my memory is correct, on a.
Okay.
Somewhere around there.
What, how many million dollar budget?
17.
17 million dollar budget, $50,000 favorable with one month, one quarter in.
Okay.
Kind of, you don't, I wouldn't have you go spending that money just yet.
No, no, no.
I already spent it, Bob, so.
Yeah, thank you.
But we're not targeting to go like way over. Okay.
The estimated healthcare cost increase of 7.9% as it plays out in Williston is estimated to be about $172,000.
So somehow that's going to, so here's the game, right? One of many options the legislature is looking at is calling, holding us harmless for that amount of money.
Right.
They would redo the equations and it wouldn't be that number, but something equivalent, I don't know what that would be. We, at this point in time, have between now and what, Bob? The next few weeks before we have to lock this down?
The date I've given everybody is the 19th, next Tuesday night.
So if the legislature makes no move between now and next Tuesday night, we must go under the assumption that we have to meet the caps as presented to us. And now.
That doesn't change the budget, what, what town has to pay or what we ask the taxpayers to approve, but it changes how it looks a little bit.
It's just, all I'm saying is it's the challenge that if we choose to meet, we have to meet. That's what I'm saying.
Then I had, I had one other question. This is for the board. So it's almost a wash, the 3.6 teaching assistant positions and the bus routes. So it's kind of a question for you guys. Would you rather have guaranteed assistance in the classroom? Because parents could fill in for teaching assistance, not necessarily. Or would we rather directly burden families and parents by taking the bus routes? And that's, I think, a very important question to possibly look at.
I had thought about the bus routes, you know, back when we were initially talking about this. And as I sort of try and operationalize the bus route change, I become, I become challenged by it. Because you have two children. One is at Allenbrook and one is at Central School. You live closer to Allenbrook. So your Central School kid is going to get on the bus at the same time, you know, but your Allenbrook kid isn't allowed to. You have to walk with your Allenbrook kid to Allenbrook or drive, and your Central School child is going to get picked up at the bus stop. You know, this is me trying to operationalize it with, because if you live, and then, and then if you live closer to Central School and you have a child at Allenbrook, your Allenbrook child can get on the bus, but your Central School child has to get to school some other way. And one and a half miles is, you know, I don't know. That, that's where I, I started. Because we bus our children all together in this community, and we don't just bus Allenbrook and then come pick up the Williston, you know, the Central School kids separately, so.
But would that happen?
Just a comment about that. I wouldn't disagree at all that operationally, lot of complications.
However, there was thought of having a family that lived close to ABS, walking distance. The WCS child would walk to ABS, get on a bus.
Oh, and then come here.
And come over here.
Okay.
The same thing could work over here. One of the things that would need study is how do you handle the additional traffic flow in the mornings at both buildings in terms of vehicles?
Right.
So that's something that's would be.
Okay. Thank you, because that's what I was trying to, I was like, okay, no, you can't get on the bus because you're too.
Right. Not that that would be without complication, but.
No, I know.
It seems like we're, we're going to get to a phase very soon about making value judgments.
Yeah, we're already starting.
How to see why versus the fund balance versus buses. But there's one more piece of information I really need before I can get to that level, which is tax implications. Because for me as a board member, it's always a balance of making sure we have a quality education for our kids, but being respectful for our taxpayers. And I think, as I said at the last board meeting, I think our community would not support us falling into the penalty phase. But what I didn't realize when I made that comment was that it may be possible that even by slipping small into the penalty phase, we'll still have a zero tax implication to our community. And so I was trying to understand what that, that wiggle room may be as, as to whether or not it actually provides us wiggle room. And I'm also thinking about when I'm making these value judgments, we're going to be facing similar choices next year. This is a two-year regimen that we're stuck with. And there are cumulative effects, right? Because we're, every time we make a cut, that brings us further behind. We're almost better by keeping it close to the margin because we can increase by a certain amount above our current budget. So we don't want to cut too much.
Yeah.
Because then it will give us more room for next year. I hate to be gaming this, but that's what it's, it's really all about.
I mean, that's the game that's been.
And also, you can't take out another 180 of the annual fund balance because you're not, it's not recommended to go below 300,000. We'd go right down to 300,000 this year, and then what are you going to do next year?
Right, we may need to do that. We may need that money for next year. But does anyone have the information about?
Yes, you have handouts in front of you.
So.
If you're ready, I'll.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Are there any other questions from the table about what Greg presented? Because then we can start to go here.
Okay, the handouts are titled, "Williston School Board Tax Outlook, January 9th, Revision 3." If you're on Revision 2 or 1, it'll get a little confusing. Does everybody have one? Okay.
Revision 3, yeah.
Yep. Anybody need one? So there, there, Josh, to your, to your request, there are, there are two scenarios outlined. One where you meet the obligation of the penalty, get just underneath it so you aren't incurring anything in that square in the worksheet. And then the second one is you deliver to your community flat taxes, and you pay a bit of a penalty nonetheless. Okay, so let me, let me do some assumptions that have changed since the last time that you looked at the sheet. The first one is the tax rate information has changed. The Joint Fiscal Office has been in the legislature since the last time we talked and made a proposal that the right tax rate yield for this coming year is not the one that they published in December, but a different number that's a bit lower in a yield amount, which has the same effect as raising your taxes. So there's about a 1% swing in taxes already between the advice we had a month ago and the advice we have now. In addition, AOE has, has indicated that the right place for us to recall, record all transportation revenue is now at the SU rather than the school district. So in the process of all this, about $300,000 or $400,000 in revenue moved from Williston to CSSU. But then your assessments were lowered for transportation since the revenue was there. So I just tell you that if you're trying to line up any of the expenditure budget numbers or the revenue numbers to prior worksheets, you got to come my way for the, the secret decoder ring. Okay, with all that? So those are the changes. We ran the two scenarios. For no penalty, the budget needs to be at 16955633 or the $678,000 reduction that Greg has outlined today. Revenue has, has been adjusted to 3213. There's a revenue worksheet on the next page if you want to get into that. And you'll see on that revenue page, do you see the transportation line on revenue and the dollar change associated with it? Miraculously, $300,000 of revenue disappeared as I've outlined before. So that, that worksheet would give you a no penalty, a tax rate of 1.025, which is a 2.1% decrease from the last year. We good so far with scenario 1? So then the next thing that, that Kevin asked that I do was do one for flat taxes. We take spending up such that the tax rate to the community of Williston for pre-K8 only after CLA is the same as it was the last year at 1.0464. That lowers the reduction needed to $535,000. But you incur a penalty of $147 per equalized pupil. So per equalized pupil, you're $147 higher than the AGP number the state had given to you.
And that's roughly $145,000 to our school district?
It is, it is, your tax rates are calculated on spending per pupil. And your tax rate formula, instead of using, say, $14,000, uses 14,000 plus 147 as a penalty. So it adjusts your tax rate a bit. I'm not sure that I would let you conclude that it's 147 times your equalized pupil is the pain and agony felt in Williston. Did you understand the difference there? It, it changes the, the formula. The penalty amount is counted twice as you calculate tax rates. That's what the penalty is. Okay, with those two scenarios? Questions?
I have a question. So you have other observations, the new language for the ballot? So there are three numbers, if my memory serves, on the ballot. There is the expenditure budget. There is your current, so this, this year, your equalized, per equalized pupil amount that you spend, which I have no idea what that number is. And then yours, your proposed for next year, what you're going to spend per equalized pupil. Is that correct?
The three numbers now required in the voted article in the state of Vermont have the warned budget number, the 16 million.
Yeah.
Or 17,999 that we mentioned.
Right.
You have to mention your cost per pupil.
Right, okay.
And using the no penalty, that is 14,120. And then you have to mention the increase in spending per pupil year to year. So that's 2.3% higher than the spending in the current year.
Oh, you do a percentage for the last one?
That's the, those are the three numbers prescribed by law to include in your article.
So you don't have to say that there's a penalty. You don't have to spell that out.
Not in the voted article. Just about everything else gets included in the voted article, but not that.
Right.
So can you, with your language there, can you give us those numbers for the no penalty version and the flat tax rate version? So we have that language to look at. So we know what the budget amount is for both. But then you gave out a $14,120 number per equalized pupil. That's our current year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to be the same for both no penalty and flat taxes. Then what is the percent increase in per equalized pupil for no penalty? And what is the percent increase in, is that number on here or am I?
If you change the voted article from the no penalty to the flat tax, you change the warned budget amount to 17,0990.
Yep.
You change the spending per pupil to 14,26745.
Okay.
And I'd have to give you the percentage. It's probably going to be up like 3% rather than 2%.
Okay.
But I haven't done that, Matthew.
Okay.
And Bob, if, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If, if I understand the wiggle room between the, just staying underneath the penalty and the 0% tax implication, is about $145,000?
Yes.
14367.
Okay. Which is, well, you know, 75% if you will of the, of the.
Fund balance.
The fund balance.
Yeah, if I could embellish the insight I and your auditor would have given you on fund balance in prior years, I think it's revised this year to say we would caution boards not to put any more in fund balance this year that they can't repeat next year. And that would be kind of the limit. And that's a lower number. In prior years, we asked you to kind of build it up so you had $300,000 or $400,000 there. These are very difficult times. And I think you, you, you put yourself at great risk if you don't have next year covered. But if, if the need be and you need to go to that level, we, we would say this is probably the right time to give that fair consideration. Don't spend more than half so that when you're sitting around this table one year from now, you already know you're going to be able to hold it for another year of this inappropriate burden that an act has put on your table. And it is a two-year, a two-year law. So there's a distinct possibility that it wouldn't continue after next year.
Right, and I would argue we might even want to hold more so we have more flexibility next year. But I, I appreciate the auditor's perspective.
Yeah, Brian.
Does, if you, if you use your fund balance, does that count as revenue?
Yes.
For your, so that was, that was my question because as you think about revenue for next year, you would have to start from the presumption that either you would use or be in the hole X amount, which would also be a consideration for next year's budget.
Yep.
Tough questions.
Bob has referenced, can you tell us what other boards, what the other boards in the SU that have approved our budgets have done with this?
Some are not done, but others are beyond this meeting and finishing the paperwork on the 19th. In general, each board of the, the SU will miraculously report a spending per pupil that takes them up to the maximum they can without having a penalty.
What about alternative ballot items? So let's say hypothetically, the legislature does nothing. And we want to run the risk of a small penalty so we don't, so we have options next year with our fund balance. So we have $45,000, $40,000 of our fund balance being warned that we're going to use towards the next budget year. That's one scenario. Another scenario is come February 28th, a new act is passed by the legislature allowing for a modification of the healthcare increases, so that's taken off the table. We're no longer in the penalty, and we don't need the fund balance to, to protect ourselves.
But it's already on the ballot.
But it's already on the ballot.
Fund balance is a voted article on your ballot, both the amount that you use and the amount that you retain. So you're, Josh, my understanding is that, that you're in kind of a messy swamp that needs the advice of legal counsel if you intend to warn articles, set them up to go to publication and vote, and then want to orchestrate a change?
But Josh.
After that, after you've done all of that.
If we, if we choose to have to spend fund balance and put it on the ballot, come February 28th, turns out we get relief, it's going to come back to us and be put back in fund balance because it will be extra revenue for the next year. So then, in effect, your fund balance is held harmless.
Is that, but aren't we, won't that, are you sure?
No, I'm just, I'm not sure, but it would seem to me that if you're going to, if you're going to warn a budget and it's this much, and then we get that budget passed, that's the budget we're working with. If we, after having warned and put that to ballot, get relief from the state, that's revenue that comes back, I would think.
But that's not real, the, if, I, I don't know that that would be actual monies that the, that the district would realize. If, if there is a change in the threshold, I, I don't think that that means the state's going to turn around and say, here's your 172 for healthcare.
Well, I, I guess I'm confused. Why would they even bother then? Because if, if everybody across the state has to have worn ballots in place and they make action after it, then it wouldn't, then, then all they could do is do it for next year. I, I'm confused.
I think what it'll do is it'll have an impact on the tax rate.
Oh, tax rate, yeah. Yeah, right. So then it doesn't, right, then it wouldn't be money we see. I understand now.
Are any of our sister school districts looking at alternative?
None to date. As I said, if I had to guess, when the sun sets next Tuesday, all, all of them will have met AGP and recorded a cost per pupil that keeps them out of the penalty. By the way, the tax rate is calculated today. And I think you're right. I think if they change the tax rate calculation, or it isn't, if they change this penalty threshold, those of you who thought you were going to pay a penalty in your tax rate. those of you who thought you were going to pay a penalty in your tax rate calculation are just not going to. So the tax rate would be a little bit better, because I wouldn't get to include that additional cost twice. But you're not going to end up, all of the things being equal, you're not going to end up at the next year with an extra one hundred and forty thousand dollars anywhere.
Residents would have that, basically.
Yeah, to the extent, yeah.
A decreased tax rate. And so maybe I need to rephrase my question earlier. So all the other SU boards are going to meet AGP. Are they, are they all going, including the use of fund balance?
Yes, and some more ambitiously than you.
That's what I wanted to understand.
A certain community to the south of all of us is, is in tough, tough shape and will likely...
Yeah.
Go deeper into fund balance to make sure it happens.
I'm not saying it's a justification, I just wanted to use a data point.
I wanted to bring up a point that Karen raised in our last meeting. So there are two acts to forty, there are two parts to Act Forty-six, sorry. There's this portion where we have to, you know, meet an AGP, and then there's the consolidation portion. If we vote to consolidate, next year, we're not necessarily constrained by the AGP that we currently have, right?
If the, if the committee makes a recommendation to go to voters for consolidation, and if the community votes favorably on that, then the AGP does not apply next year to the combined district, because there's no base amount that we can calculate, since it's the first year of their operation.
Okay. But it's, but mine too.
If I could say, the way the Act Forty-six study committee is formulating that voting process, it would be a, we're all in this. You know, so Willis, if, even if Williston voted in support of consolidation, if not, all four of us voted.
Oh, it's all or nothing?
That's the way I think we're moving.
That's the way the current articles...
That's the way we're writing our articles. Because it makes for a very complicated governance structure otherwise.
Yep.
So, so even if, you know, so I just wanted to make that clear, that, you know, we would still then, we would not consolidate. And so then AGP still applies for next year, even if Williston, as a, as a community, voted in favor of consolidation.
Even if we voted in favor and we didn't get the...
Right. Not if, if, if one of the other three districts...
All four towns need to vote.
All four towns going into CVU need to agree in the direction they're going, or...
It's actually five towns. Whether St. George votes yes or no.
The only ones we are requiring are the ones who have school buildings.
And, and, you know, I'm not part of that committee, so I can't really speak and tell anyone about that. But there may be tax implications that might not be favored for every town. So I would not even go there, in terms of budget assumptions.
I think we'll learn more about that in the coming week or two. I don't want to jump there yet.
But how does that, so how does the consolidation affect our judgment calls now? So we're going to take our annual fund of, if we deplete it by one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we'll take our three hundred thousand dollar annual fund into this pool of...
I, I just, can I, for, just for, for semantics or whatever, don't call it the annual fund, because parents in this community think of the annual fund as something very different. So, call it the, right, so, yeah, fund balance. If we can just, you know, just call it the fund balance, because the annual fund doesn't have four hundred thousand dollars in it.
We'd be really happy if it did.
FAP would be like, you know.
Fund balance, okay.
And it is fund with a D. I was at CVU and a couple of people thought we were talking of fund balance.
I think those are good questions that are raised. I, for one, feel like there's so many variables that I can't assume that consolidation is a factor in the decisions we need to make.
Yeah, I would have to agree. It's just, there's too many dials being turned there.
So if I may frame the issue at least maybe one decision point?
Yeah.
You know, the question in my mind is, do we want to run a small penalty and go for a flat tax to give us more wiggle room? Or, or do we want to look at other cuts?
Well, can I ask a question just to, to add to that? So if I read your, your, where is it, your document? So on the flat taxes, we're talking about a reduction of five thirty-five, right? Which would be different to the six seventy-eight that we are talking about right now, right? So we basically, in effect, have one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that we have to, that we keep.
Or less of fund balance than we use.
Well, we, yeah, we haven't even made that decision where it's going to come from.
Right, right, right.
So we're saving, saving one forty-three, basically.
We're not spending, but we're not spending.
Well, we're saving not in the sense of, you know, keeping it in our pockets, but keep...
You're comfortable a little earlier in Greg's presentation, like a page before.
Another thing, considering, so let's say we propose a flat tax and people vote it down. Then you guys just have to put something else together and come back with it. Is that the end of the world?
It's a pretty simple comeback. I would come back at AGP. I wouldn't even mess with it personally.
Well, but I mean, it's, my point is, it's not the end of the world if you put something out there and it doesn't pass for a school budget. It might buy you more time to see what the state does if they do anything. Consideration.
I, I think it all depends on how we frame it, right? Because it's going to be a flat tax rate. So for the taxpayer, it's flat to last year, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And it has advantages to next year.
And not only that, and you're investing in your community.
Yeah, not as short.
So it's, it's flat.
And it's still, and another point of fact is that it's still a reduction in the overall budget. It is a...
Right. Five hundred thousand, you're still cutting five hundred thousand dollars. Painful, yeah.
And if the legislature does the right thing and gives us a little relief, there won't be any penalty.
One thing, Josh, it's not a reduction of the budget, right? It's, it's a reduction in, in what we're spending outside of salary and healthcare.
No, my understanding...
It's a reduction in the budget.
From our baseline budget. From our baseline budget, okay, but not from the previous year, but from the baseline budget, okay.
From the proposal.
Yeah.
But what is it compared to last year's budget?
Well, it's up three point something percent.
It's up, has to be up.
Yeah, three point three.
Three point three.
The no penalty budget is... Two point one percent lower than last year. So you still would be a lower warned budget this year than last year. But be careful, because we just did that transportation movement. So three hundred thousand dollars of costs, accounting-wise disappeared, so. The other thing I'd caution you, just to be honest in what you're about, maybe to consider, the, the tax rate calculation, the flat tax rate is based on information that, not that we got in December, but that was revised in January. The legislation, legislature won't finish the process of deciding on a tax rate until likely May of this year. And at some point in time, they may decide to provide additional perspective that, that isn't yet finished, but prior to your town meeting. So do you understand that flat tax rate calculation is based on what we're looking at in cards today on January eleventh?
So it's like you're definitely going to tax, it's not guaranteed, potentially.
If, if the joint fiscal office says the tax rate's got to go up by a penny because of issues in Montpelier, you, you have to somehow enhance your communication deal with that, because the picture has changed.
And typically, if I recall, there are adjustments that are made at the end of the session.
And typically, legislatures like to make a change the last week of February, so that as they're in town meetings, they're, they're doing good work for you. So it wouldn't rule out that some of this could change along the, along the journey, but...
So we have in front of us Greg's proposal. All, all of his proposal brings us to the no penalty. So that's all of the cuts.
Yeah, to the no penalty.
Yeah, so that's all the cuts. And...
Well, not the bus, the bus route.
Minus the bus, yeah. And so what we are trying to decide is, correct me if I'm wrong, is if these cuts here, maybe simplified, but if, minus tax implications, is if the, if there's any items in here that we want to include in the budget and either pay with our fund balance, make some additional cuts, or pay two dollars for every dollar that we have here.
Over, you're still over there.
Without going into the fund balance.
Well, I think you're going to find that even, even at flat tax, with the proposals you have there, you're still going to have to dip about forty thousand dollars into fund balance to match.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I was going through these and I was trying to figure out, well, what's, what are the, you know, just looking through the budget that staff made. There's a lot of recommendations that say there's no changes, or there's minimal changes. There's a lot of changes that just involves, that involves supplies or equipment. And then there's changes that affect FTEs. I just circled three of them that I felt were the more important ones for me. And I don't know if we need to do a reverse, you know, some type of a reverse rubrics, where instead of, you know, we got to decide, you know, how much money are we looking for above a no penalty? And then how do we fund it? I don't know if that's a good approach, but...
That may be a difficult approach to, to do, but, but it is an approach. Another approach could be that we start to narrow down our, our options here, so we can make some deeper decisions. I think we have three things we need to decide on. Number one, whether or not the bus reduction, or the bus, the reduction in bus routes is on or off the table. I think we should, we should discuss and make a decision on that first, because it changes the entire conversation going forward. Number two, I think we need to come to some consensus on the recommended proposal. Because once we do that, we can then determine, number three, how much a fund balance and the tax implication we want to incur to get to that recommendation. What do you think?
From where I sit, the threshold question is whether we have the flexibility or the stomach to go into the penalty phase or not. Because I think everything flows from that decision. If we don't...
Yeah, that's true. I, I would, I would amend the proposed process to start there.
You know, for me, I make my decisions about stuff like that based on what's the gain? What's the value, right? So I can't make a decision of whether I want to pay a penalty or not, if I don't know what I'm paying a penalty for. And the same thing with the bus route, like, do I want to have everybody have a bus route? Well, yeah. That's obvious.
I, I think it's a matter of semantics, Kevin, because basically, you know, everything that's on the list right now is to keep our services untouched. So going into the assumption...
I don't know that that's true. I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't think that all of those services need to be in touch, because a very large majority of them say very little program impact, or no longer needed, or, you know, no change in things, you know. So why should we be funding those things that don't need to be funded, you know?
Not sure if that's, well, it's being said there. There's a couple there.
Well, I think the implication is that the, you know, reduction will not result in a change in art instructional minutes for students pre K through eight.
So what does that mean to you?
To me, that means that we shouldn't have that.
Well, that's what's being suggested.
Right.
That money's being pulled out. We have a reducing number of students.
But there's certain items in here that I believe should be included in the budget.
Right.
So I don't think it's an all or nothing. I don't think we should say, we're either going to fund all of this or not. I think we need to fund the items in here that we feel are important.
So Kevin, if I understand your question, does that mean there are specific items that the administration is proposing to cut that you would like to build back into the budget?
Yeah, I think there's specifically three items that I think we should consider funding.
What are those?
There are the three point six FTE teaching assistant positions, the one point two FTE custodial staff, and the one FTE elementary teacher position.
And so I need to immediately ask, because this is where I'm at in this process, those are, those are, those come out to be well over a hundred thousand dollars in add backs.
Those come out to one hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight six dollars in add backs. So propose to me how you would pay for that. So if we go into flat tax, that's one hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. If we go into the fund balance for the remaining forty-five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, there you are.
No, but you're already using it.
You go up to two hundred and twenty-five.
And fund balance, then?
No, 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 no. So the no penalty does not include any fund balance.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a fund balance.
Well, the way I'm reading it says, it does not, oh, the revenue fix.
That's the revenue, yeah, unfortunately.
All right, so then, then you have to make a decision about mentoring or busing. Maybe mentoring for a year, one year. It's a program that's going to stay. It's not going to go anywhere. You can jump right back into it next year.
And it doesn't have to be a lot, all or nothing. Maybe twenty-five. You know, I, I don't...
That's, that's, that's my thought.
I'm just, I'm just saying, why are we so against touching?
I think we're not. I think that this is a pretty...
Well, I think we are, because it's never been brought up.
Okay, you're talking specifically about CY, but in the bigger picture, I think the state...
But it, it is the bigger picture. It's fifty grand.
Well, it has been brought up, and the administration has looked at it. And, you know, through a lot of conversation and study of all these items, it is not a place that we recommend reducing. We're serving fifty-six students who can be, that includes some of our most fragile learners. There's a waiting list of the program of fifteen students. We have students who, we have a program now running where is, is, across the board by all populations of students, looked at as that's a place I want to be, how do I get in that?
I, I get that, Greg. I'm sorry for interrupting you. But I, I think equally on the children that will not be supported in the classroom, because a teacher will be pulled in to have to walk out of the room to get photocopies in order to give a class. Or, I don't, I don't know, you, you name it, at Paris.
So what I would suggest, what I would like to say, do not to that, is that the administration has considered that, has given that a lot of thought, and understands that there'll be different responsibilities for the remaining TA positions that are left. This, there are a lot of things on this, things that are going to have real impact on these proposals, and that the administration has looked at all of that and understood the impact. And it is presenting what we're presenting for a very deliberate reason, because we think it reflects cuts that are supporting the work that's happening here and will have minimal impact on the work that is happening here.
So in, in the interest of coming to a conclusion on this and a couple of other items, I think we should do this. If this is something that we want to consider, let's get a motion out, have a, have a final discussion and a vote, specifically on CY, specifically on the bus issue. Because I think those are the two things we're talking about here, or maybe the TAs.
Would that be framed in a larger conversation around items that are going back in? I mean, it would...
I, I, I think, I think, I said it before, I think we're turning a lot of dials. And it seems like we have a specific interest in one program. So if we're going to, if we're going to have a decision about it, I would like to have a discussion about it. And I've been holding back, because I don't feel it's appropriate to have it unless there's a motion on the table. Because it's, to me, it's, it's regardless until this board shows its will that it wants to consider it.
I don't know, I don't know that I want to, well, I'll vote on it, but I'm just wondering. I mean, there's also different ways to get that, that money besides going to the mentor, right?
I understand, but it's, but we have a board member who seriously wants us to look at it, and I respect that. And if we do, we should do it correctly.
Sure, let's do it.
And I also, as chair, we need to come to... And I also, as chair, we need to come to a conclusion this evening, and we could literally be here all night long unless we make some tough decisions and move in a direction soon. So, counter proposals?
Yeah, I wanna put for discussion purposes a motion to adopt the budget as proposed by the administration.
Excellent.
But which one?
Well, they've only proposed one.
So no penalty.
No penalty?
Nope, just the proposals, right?
Just the no penalty budget. Not saying I'm voting for it, but I, just to, to move the process, I move to adopt the budget proposed by the administration.
Second.
So moved. Let's have this discussion.
Yeah. What's the fund balance at the no penalty? I'm sorry, I, I thought it was one eighty, right?
I think Josh's proposition is to vote on a budget, and the budget number you're voting on is sixteen million, nine five five, six three three.
Thank you for that.
And the fund balance, that, the fund balance...
The fund balance applied would be one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Putting you, putting you at approximately three hundred thousand dollars remaining fund balance.
Three hundred remaining.
Three hundred remaining.
Plus his year's contributions.
So...
Yeah.
Right.
So forgive me for not knowing my Roberts rules here, but I wanna make an amendment to, to further the discussion.
You can, you can, you can amend your own proposal.
We're not gonna hold you to Robert's rules.
I amend that we... Just, because I wanna isolate the issue, I'm trying to isolate the issue of, of the, the penalty. So let me amend that in your motion. I am, I move that we adopt the budget proposed by the administration with a reduction in the, um, fund balance so that we are proposing a budget of seventeen million, ninety-nine thousand.
Wait, you just completely changed your...
I know, I know.
So you wanna, you wanna, you wanna play this the other way? Is what you wanna do?
I'll second that.
What? The flat tax.
So you wanna...
So, so, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, I...
Before I ask for a second, you're at, you're, you're, you're actually asking that we consider the flat tax proposal?
Yes.
Okay. So to be clear, your motion is to accept...
The flat tax.
To, to accept an expenditure budget of seventeen million, nine hundred and nine, ninety-nine thousand dollars, period. That's really all that matters.
Well, but based upon the cuts that the administration has proposed, except for the fund balance, right? So I'm not talking about a bus route, I'm not talking about...
Specific ones.
Cutting CY.
Right, as proposed.
As proposed.
So, so that would mean, in effect, that would mean that your proposal would be as proposed, and in effect, the, the effect on fund balance would be about forty thousand dollars.
Correct. As opposed to...
Anybody help me word this so that it's...
I, I like the way Josh worded it. You're considering an expenditure budget of seventeen million, zero nine nine, zero zero zero.
Are you saying that you're going to adopt the proposal as well with, instead of a forty thousand dollar fund balance, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar fund balance application, you're applying only forty thousand dollars?
That's correct.
That's my intention.
Okay.
Yep.
I get, I see what you're saying.
I think that's a worthwhile thing to vote on as a taxpayer.
Do, do, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
For the money while cutting the program.
All right, so I need to understand it.
Yep.
Because, uh, so Josh has proposed that we vote on the flat tax.
That's correct.
Proposal.
Specifically where you take the reductions from the fund balance, that's it?
Oh, and so the reductions come out of the fund balance.
No, five thirty-five.
You're just voting on that number.
The impact of the flat tax proposal is essentially to take our fund balance from a hundred and eighty to forty thousand.
The expenditure from the fund balance.
The expenditure of fund balance.
To reduce it by only forty, which implies that all the cuts are going to go through, and we're not, you know, we're not doing the extra school bus route cut, but the TAs, the F, all the FTEs, all the cuts, all in.
That, that's the motion for discussion and decision.
I don't know if I'm just observing it the way you are, but the way I think of it is seventeen million, right, seventeen point oh nine nine, which would represent a five hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five reduction from prior year, right?
So I'll second that.
Which basically...
You did? Oh, okay.
Point of privilege, let's just get the, can we get the motion on the table?
Question on the table.
And then...
I think the motion is on the table.
So we're having the discussion, right?
So this is the discussion?
Okay. Sorry, Janine.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just trying to, the fact that you're isolating the fund balance is, it's, it's a way around saying, okay, instead of one eighty, we will only touch forty thousand of the fund balance.
And, and not to put words in, in your mouth, but the comment, and I think it was a valid one, is that the choice, as I see it, is that we preserve our options with the fund balance for next year when we face these difficult choices versus making cuts now or, or...
Making further cuts.
Making further cuts, or there's a third option, which is go into the penalty phase and you fund some additional programs that have been cut by the administration. But I'm, I'm just trying to identify the choices.
And just to be clear, go further into the penalty phase?
Further into the penalty phase.
Because at the flat tax, you are in penalty.
Understood.
Okay. Just to make sure everyone understood.
But you could, one option is you keep the same level of fund balance, a hundred and eighty, and you add back in some of the cuts.
So if I might, the other option is if the board approved a, a budget of five hundred and thirty, the seventeen million dollar budget, that would require thirty-six thousand, six hundred of fund balance, but I would ask...
Additional?
No. If you took all of the proposed reductions and added thirty-six thousand of fund balance, Josh was using the forty number.
Oh, okay.
You'd get to that seventeen million number. What I would request of the board is tell me an acceptable fund balance number, and I would like to look at this for putbacks too, because now we're down to it. The administration is suggesting a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar. I, I get what's happening here in terms of the flat tax. That's a drastic change, thirty-six thousand out of that still leaves you with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance. I think we're at four hundred and eighty-eight. I would suggest that I have the opportunity to say, here's an acceptable amount of fund balance that we're willing to contribute and manage risk to look at this for potential putbacks.
But my proposal, just so you know, know my thinking, this isn't about managing risk. This is about having extra cash for next year to deal with the problem. That's my motivation behind the proposal.
Right, and so if I can add to, to Greg's thing is, is in my opinion, I think that forty thousand, only using forty thousand dollars of fund balance is over generous and that we probably can dip a bit more into fund balance and provide a bit value back to the taxpayer for asking them to take this versus, you know, take the penalty. And I don't think it necessarily is a, a much larger number, but I think we should, we should direct Greg to give us some ideas quickly.
What I, what I'm trying to get at is if, if the target number were lower that the administrators were working with, you wouldn't see all these things on this list. You know, I mean, if, if I were coming to this meeting prepared to provide you with a way to get to five hun, seventeen million, ninety-nine thousand, my, my proposals would have been different.
Right.
So I'm looking for the opportunity to, to make adjustments.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna, my proposal doesn't give the administration that opportunity because I want cash on hand to deal with the contingencies of next year. That's, that's my motivation in the, in the motion.
So I would respectfully request that opportunity.
And I'm not going to amend my motion, but I understand the request.
Could you clarify your motion for me?
You wouldn't necessarily have to amend the motion.
Seriously?
My motion is to adopt the seventeen million, ninety-nine thousand dollar budget based upon the cuts proposed by the administration with an adjustment to the expenditure from the fund balance from a hundred and eighty thousand to...
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six and change.
And you're okay with wherever that tax rate then comes out?
My understanding that that tax rate, based upon current assumptions today, is a zero impact on the tax.
Oh, the flat tax.
That's a flat, essentially the flat tax option.
And, and I just wanna say, that flat tax, um, specific line is really important because when you say we're being very generous, it, it, I think it's, yeah, it will mean a penalty to the taxpayer, sort of, but at the end of the day, they will end up with the same tax rate that they had last year.
Absolutely, but we're holding in general fund, basically taxpayer money.
Right, but it's, it's a...
That, that, you know, we either use, we either use next year, ask to keep for future years, or give back. Those are, you know...
It's money that's supposed to be used to educate the children in some way.
Right, but, but it's also...
If it's used to deal with the implications of tax budget next year, or teaching assistance this year, or busing next year, it's a student's money.
And it's entirely normal for us, year to year, to go back and with a ballot motion, which we have already here, that says we would like to use X amount for this, and the rest we'd like to keep in reserve for future years. The question in my mind is, is what's the, what's the right amount of money to use this year?
How much did we use last year? Wasn't it a hundred?
I believe zero. It was zero last year.
Oh, I thought we did use some last year.
I think in a year previous or two, it was, there was a hundred thousand dollars expenditure, but it was a while back.
So my motive, I mean, just...
I understand.
I wanna make sure that we're not being forced into dramatic programmatic cuts next year for our kids, and if that means that the taxpayers can't fully, um, have the benefit of it this year, for me, that's a worthwhile trade-off.
So Josh, you're kind of assuming, I, I think I finally get where you're coming from. So you're assuming that next year, we're gonna be presented with a similar situation where we have to cut even more, but we're already really, really lean because we've made all these teaching cuts. So then you're thinking, let's dip in more to the annual, or, or the fund balance next year. Sorry, I'm in FAP too. This is driving me insane. Okay. I see what you're saying. Okay.
I mean, just the mathematics alone, and with no insult to the, to the teachers' union, we've got three and a quarter, thereabouts, of, of wage increases, and we're gonna have healthcare, which will be that much more. That, that's probably the biggest cost driver, as, as the folks from the Teachers Association pointed out. And the only way we're gonna be able to make ends meet will be to make programmatic cuts unless we've got some cash that we can, we can utilize. And that, and that's where I'm coming from.
So there is a bunch of cash that I haven't been, no, I'm just kidding. There, you know, I wanna, I wanna frame this, you know, because, carefully, because we were talking about, you know, people's livelihoods and people's positions, but when you look at the enrollment projections, and, and I, I mentioned this last meeting, and I think it's important to mention again, there are likely reductions in teaching staff that will come out naturally next year in preparing for the year after as a result of this smaller group that's moving into three, four next year. That group will be moving up. And also another very large bubble group that is currently in seventh grade, next year they'll be eighth grade, and they'll be moving out. So I bring that up because without, without significant impacts to class sizes, there will likely be reductions in, um, teaching instruction. And again, we're talking about people's positions, however, I just, we, you know, we need to look multiple years out, and that positions the budget differently.
That's kind of what Josh is doing. I think I finally understand where you're coming from. So this year, the salaries, just, they went up three point four percent from last year, and there was a three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar increase purely salaries and benefits. So if we have to meet that increase next year, you're thinking, apply more of the fund balance then when we have some things where we can...
But what Greg's saying is that if we're, if, with, if we follow our population changes through our system...
It won't be as big, but it'll still be worth it.
We would be, we would be, there would be an FTE change naturally because of that, right? And so you could have a few positions, so we could have a couple hundred thousand dollars...
We're gonna have to do both.
Okay.
Because it's based upon average per pupil spending.
That's right.
That's the budgetary fix. So if we don't adjust, uh, teaching sizes for reduced class loads, it'll just compound the problem that we already have. I don't, I don't think we're gonna get...
That much relief that way.
That much relief because the, um, our budget's gonna have to be reduced anyway under the, under the legislature's Act Forty-Six because it's a measurement of average per pupil spending, not gross budget.
So let me just ask, ask you a clarifying question, Greg. If we adopted the budget, as Josh says, except that we gave you the opportunity to look at the reduction number that's changed for you, I don't even know if it has really, but it'd only change for you if we, if we adopted the use of more fund balances, is that...
Well, I just feel like I prepared a budget to hit a target number of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I'm sorry, a reduction number of six hundred and seventy-eight, and I would've brought you a different proposal.
If you had.
If I knew I was looking...
If you knew it was five hundred.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to understand.
So that feels funny to me?
Yeah, that's the budget I'm looking at. But we wouldn't be saving, we would, you would still be requiring us to spend down more of our...
Well, it would be less than a hundred and eighty.
Right.
What I'm suggesting, yeah, right, it would be less than a hundred and eighty, but it would still include...
More than forty?
Correct. Because I would recommend putbacks.
Basically, you guys are trying to vote on whether or not you wanna have cash on hand next year, or you wanna have, to make more hard decisions, and it's, so it's not necessarily...
I would just comment that while I run my own budget, certainly cash on hand, there's a certain strength in numbers in, for, when you have large populations, having done condo budgets and corporate budgets, there's a lot more strength in numbers and a little bit less caution is needed, especially when it comes to educating, and, and maybe because I do have checks in the system, I might be biased.
Well, also, you know, it just feels like, why should we be making sacrifices now that are very extreme, you know? And then for something that's not necessarily even, it's like a golden egg, you know, it's not necessarily gonna, we're not gonna necessarily need it, and, you know, it's like getting rid of the mentor, mentoring program, right? I mean, so we're getting rid of other programs that could affect kids also just as much, so maybe down the road, it, it does make a difference for five or six kids because we decided that we wanted to cut some programs and...
But, but we're not cutting any programs.
Buffer ourselves. Well, we can add more if we go with a flat taxes, you know, if we go in a different route.
But again, we're not cutting any programs in what, what Greg has put...
So I'm sorry I said the word programs, but we're certainly affecting the, the way the classrooms look.
And I wanna smooth out, I don't think it's a golden egg issue, I think it's a matter of trying to smooth out the impact, but I can understand that those are value choices and that maybe...
Yeah, I think we should vote on it.
The taxpayers should have that benefit, or, or students can have the immediate benefit, although I, I'm concerned that there may be a cost to that immediate benefit next year. That's my concern.
Yeah.
Well, I think with more time alter, I think the busing change, I think is a good one, but I think people may need more warnings, but that should probably get out there really that would be done next year. I think the principal staff, I think something could potentially be there, be done there for sizable savings. I think if you know it's coming for next year, um, work can be done.
Another, so as we're thinking about whether or not to essentially make these cuts this year or make fewer cuts and keep, pay with cash, these cuts would still be applicable next year, and kind of in a high, like, looking at it from a higher level, like, if you, if you... Does that make sense? So if you're...
Not necessarily all of them.
Not necessarily? Well, right, not necessarily.
The, the technology, equipment and supplies.
Right.
I would not recommend that that cut carry forward beyond this year. I mentioned the, you know, the athletic uniforms or other pieces that I would, not many, but a few of them are one, one-year reductions.
Okay, so to kind of reframe things a little bit, so you can either make all these cuts now and keep a little more cash on hand, or you could save some of these reductions potentially for the future if you have to make them in the future and then apply more cash now, since, I understand, Greg, that the tech stuff and, you know, but there were, there were, there were just a few of them, right? It wasn't, it wasn't a high number.
Correct. So here's my thinking.
I was going to move the call to question.
I was going to move the call to question myself, but in doing so, I want to, I want to be clear. If this vote, this vote passes, then we've, we've made a decision. If this vote fails, we're going to need another motion. And by the discussion I'm hearing, that motion should be pretty clear as to the direction we're giving, both for the amount of money we feel comfortable spending out of fund balance, because unless I understand the discussion differently, that's the only other thing we're going to be discussing here, and the direction we're going to give administration to use, to use for putbacks. Because otherwise, we don't have a budget. So either this vote passes as is, which personally I'm inclined to vote and agree on, or this vote fails and I need a motion to move us forward, because we're either, you're either going to, you're either going to give some arbitrary number and have no idea what you're going to use it for, or we're going to have to give direction to Greg to go back and give us proposals, and we have one opportunity left to vote on that, and that's at next week's special meeting. Okay? So we would be postponing the action we really should be taking this evening. Does anybody disagree, anybody have any comments on that before we call the question?
Altogether, I don't know what the right word is, smooth, but I mean, it's almost, you basically have the yes or else, it's the end of the world. Not exactly, but so it doesn't-
You know, we're, we're grinding sausage and now it's time to make it.
I have a question. So if the school board were to vote on approving a budget amount, and let's say it's the 17 million, 99,000 dollar amount that results in 0% tax, and they, that was the motion.
Yes, that's the motion.
But that's what I'm saying, without the discussion of the fund balance application. So you're approving this amount of budget, okay? And then there were a separate motion and discussion about an acceptable amount of fund balance to apply. Okay?
Unfortunately, I think the motion on the table is specific to the fund balance.
In fairness to Greg, there, there are a multitude of options. That could be an alternative motion. Another motion could be to adopt the no penalty budget as proposed earlier. I'm going to support my own motion, but in fairness to Greg, one option if this motion fails is to propose the 17 million, 99,000 dollar budget with the same allocation from the fund balance, which would give Greg effectively $100,000 to play with. Right?
A hundred and four.
Or some, or some number in between.
Or some number in between, depending-
Whatever we're comfortable with and find out.
Right. I mean, it makes for a very long evening, I, I recognize, but-
Well, it just means that we have to vote at the next week.
I, I would, I would caution, I think we need to do the heavy lifting tonight.
When, what I was getting at, and I know, understand there's a motion already on the table. If, if, if there, if that motion did not pass, if there were a motion that just talked about the dollar amount of the budget, so the board is voting on a 17 million, 99, 000 budget, then there were a separate conversation about the acceptable amount of fund balance to apply as revenue, then, in other words, you're basically saying, here's what we're going to put to the voters, it's going to result in a 0%, and then there's a separate conversation about the amount of, the board considers to be an acceptable amount of fund balance to apply as revenue. And then I can, then, we can do the math and identify potential opportunities for putbacks, if there were any.
Well, it does, it takes the meat out of Josh's proposal.
I'm suggesting if, if Josh's proposal, if Josh's, if that motion didn't, didn't pass.
I'd like to move, I, I've got some reaction to that, but I, I don't want to cloud, I'd like to put this to a vote. I think we've all debated this. If there's, I mean, if there's a new perspective, I'd love to hear it, but I think we need to make a decision up or down. So I move the call to question, and we would ask for a vote on moving to call the question.
Josh, one thing, does this, so does this mean that you would accept it without the buses, just as is? Okay.
That's, yeah, that's the current motion.
Okay.
And you're voting on a budget of 17, oh-
Million nine.
Ninety-nine.
Oh, ninety-nine, and a fund balance of 36, 633?
Six, six, right.
Thirty-three, six, six, three, or three, six, six.
And we're paying $160,000 in penalty.
You can't figure that yet. You can't figure that yet.
I can't get that far that quickly.
But the penalties included in that flat tax.
$147 per equalized people.
$147 per equalized.
So given that we have, we have a request to call the question, and I don't think we've got any further discussion that's going to affect the, the vote, I'd like to call it. So all in favor of the motion, please indicate with an aye?
Aye.
I also will vote aye.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I just can't vote because I don't understand this. So, and I'm sorry. So is, is the, is what you're saying that everything that is in this list would need to be, like, there is no, no way for Greg to change this, except for the fund balance?
Thirty-six.
Uh-huh, yeah. That's what you're saying.
It's as proposed, yeah, so Javon, the, the motion was as proposed, so it's that list right there.
Yeah, I just needed to understand that, so that I know what I'm voting for.
So-
And so if I vote yes, so that, that means that the interest of discussing the use of CY funds or-
Bus routes.
Anything else is out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now I can vote. I'm sorry. I didn't, I needed to understand that.
We have two ayes on the table. Any more ayes? All opposed?
Nay.
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 Motion fails. Do I have another motion on the, to bring to the table?
Yes, I would like us to, I, I propose, I don't know if that's the right wording, but I would like to take a look at the opportunity to review expenditures for CY, and I will bring it back for the administration. And what else did we say? I think those were the two things.
So I'm sorry, what two specific things are you making?
CY.
And, and what-
And by that, I don't mean eliminate, like diverting the funds.
And what is your, and what is your- Right. And what is your motion specifically? To eliminate, reduce, discuss? We can't, we, this is an action.
To discuss, to discuss.
This is an action.
Oh, oh. So you want me to give you a specific amount?
I need a motion for action.
Okay. I propose for the reduction of CY budget, the mentoring program specifically by 25,000.
Do I hear any seconds for the motion? Hearing no seconds for the motion, the motion can't be voted upon or acted upon. Do we have any other motions to put forward?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the expenditure budget, and I've never made one of these, so, seventeen, the 17 million, 99,000, giving with a $100,000 fund balance use.
So can, can I make a suggestion before we ask for a second?
Okay.
Well, you can, you can make that motion, but another motion that could be made from the, from the table is that we just adopt the budget. And then if we vote on adopting the budget, we can have a second motion to talk about the amount of fund balance to, to, because we actually do have that as an action. If you look, the process is, is separate.
Okay.
So I think it'd be great if we could get a motion from the table on the budget specifically, Bobby.
Could I inform that motion before someone makes it?
Please.
If I understand what you're now trying to do, it's in essence approve a budget that incorporates 498,000 of reduction as outlined on Greg's sheet here.
That's correct.
And doesn't do anything with fund balance just yet.
Correct.
That's not a number you have on any of your sheets of paper right now, because on your sheet of paper, you have a 535 reduction, you want a 498,000 reduction. So the budget number associated with that as a decision would be-
Oh, I see.
Seventeen million, 133, 633.
Is that exactly what I think I want to be?
No, I, I think you want to vote back for your, approve the, the flat tax budget, but have, have the cut numbers and the fund balance contribution be a separate discussion, a separate vote, which I think you can do, that you agree upon the final number of how you get there, because that's a key thing.
Right, but what, but what Bob is adding back in, because the 17 million, 99,000 has the fund balance and redu-, in it.
Has revenue in it, which isn't part of a one budget.
Right, so he's adding that revenue that we were going to use back in to give us a number of 17, 133, 633.
Kevin, can you flip over, can you vote on the fund balance first, and then the flat tax disportion, or is that too hard?
How about this, just to keep things moving, I move to adopt the no penalty budget of 16 million, 955,000, 633, and the full allocation as proposed of the fund balance.
Okay, I, I think I understand why you're going to do that.
I, I think we, it'll help the process.
I think it will help the process too. So, actually Karen, it's close to what you were doing.
And then we can vote on amendments to that motion.
Yes, I agree. So can I have a second to that?
I don't understand, so I'm not going to make a second.
I'll second it. We'll have a discussion.
Let's, okay, let's do so. Sandy, are you up to speed with us?
Yeah.
Somebody needs to be, you're the only one keeping us sane. Thank you all for your patience. This isn't easy. Okay, so go ahead.
So amendment, I think amendments can happen one of two ways. Either the sponsor of the motion can agree to it as a friendly amendment, or as a majority, or maybe it's two-thirds, I can't remember which. You could make an alternative to that motion. So for example, if someone wanted to bring back in the teacher assistance, and I'm probably-
I think, yeah, so-
Yeah, I've locked myself in.
Yeah, but it's, it's okay. I think, I think my, my end goal would be to come to some sort of an understanding about how much fund balance we as a board are comfortable allocating for this year. We can have that in this discussion right now. I think that once we come to that discussion, if it is different from the two numbers that we're, we've seen proposed, either the forty, the $36,000 for the flat tax as is, or the $180,000 as proposed, then we can move forward. If it's something in between those two, I think that we, it would be prudent that we then ask administration to give us recommendations for putbacks that make that, you know, that give us something to work from. We can then vote on that next week. That gives administration time, and we, we're done with this process at this point, and we move forward from here on. Does that make sense to you guys?
It does.
Okay, so it makes sense to everybody else?
Follow that literally.
Yeah.
He and I can pick up from that.
Okay. So I think the discussion, the discussion on the table really is around what that means. So I'll open it up.
Can we get guidance from Bob on this one, or Greg, I'm not quite sure. Bob, you gave the guidance before from like an auditor's perspective. You wouldn't want to go below $300,000 for your fund balance. Is that still applicable? Is that not applicable? I almost thought you amended that earlier.
My insight earlier was if your auditor was here intimate with the process that you're going through and other boards are going through, their insight would be as mine is, that you, just be careful not having money on hand to do the same thing next year.
Okay, so-
To have this equalized.
So you, you want to, if you do 180 this year, make sure you got 180 left in the fund balance. So regardless of what happens anywhere else, you can get back to ground zero next year and do the same transaction.
Okay, do they still have a recommended minimum or anything, or not? Not in this case?
They, in better times, they would have been more generous with how much you might have wanted to hold on to.
Okay.
But I, these are not generous times.
So if we used 180 this year and 180 next year, let's say, what does that leave us with? Does it leave us with?
120 plus 120 years.
Plus whatever comes in this year.
And next year, and, and you're beyond AGP.
We would be building it again, right?
And there's other things changing.
Right, right.
So if I, so if I can throw out a, a proposed number, which ironically is exactly where Karen was at, I would propose that we consider using no more than $100,000 in fund balance. We're at 40,000, give or take, on the flat tax. And at $100,000, we're still, that puts us down around, what, 380? 480 to 380?
Three.
Assuming, assuming some small amount to the positive, it puts us around 400, which puts us in a position possibly to have to spend 100,000 again next year, which still puts us at around $300,000 in our fund balance, which I think is a prudent number.
And, and I think, I, given what we have in the way of our facilities, and we haven't even talked about a bond vote or anything like that, but we have facilities, a lot of needs in our facility, and I would hate to use 180 this year and 180 next year and have some sort of emergency facilities issue come up where we have to dip into fund balance for that and not have it there.
I would agree that'd be prudent.
So.
Any other thoughts on that idea?
From my perspective, I'm, I'm going to need a good reason to go into a penalty phase. And maybe a good reason for that is for some of the reasons the administration will propose next week. But I don't want to just spend money for the sake of spending money. I want to understand what we're getting for that. So I, I'm, I don't want to, I'm no, have no problem with going, having the administration come back to say, if I had an extra $100,000, this is what I would do. But I don't want to just write a blank check at the same time.
Right. In reality, it's, it's $60,000 in this scenario.
Very, very.
But it's, it's not a lot of money, but it's, it could be, it could be a swing, you know, it could be something important.
Right. But I guess it's really, we haven't, you know, are we, are we as a board comfortable with a flat tax and the penalty part? And if we are, you know, if, if, if that, because we had a lot, a little bit of discussion about this in our December meeting, but, I mean, if that's where we're at, I think we have to give Greg an opportunity to, to look back at things because we're at a different budget number. If, if, and we didn't give him that number of December 21st, we didn't say, you know what, we're willing to be in the penalty phase, you know, we're, we talked about it a little bit, but we didn't give you clear instructions of that. So if we're giving him those clear instructions and we're, we're, we feel that we don't want to use more of our fund balance, we can't dip into any more programs because it's too much, we can't, there's nothing else we can go at right now, then, then the, where we think we need to be is, is this penalty, is this flat tax. I don't know, that's, you know what I'm, I'm-
Could I also point out that that is, to Bob's point earlier, that's a flat tax now in January. You know, there's, it's obvious, this is a very dynamic legislative session. You know, I, as an owner and a parent, would hate to see the school board in a position of saying, we're giving you a flat tax, and then July 1st comes out, and you go, wait a minute.
You said flat.
This isn't a flat tax. They said flat tax. You know, and clearly, as a parent, I'm going to say, as much as we can get in there, I also want you to be supported by this community all the way through. And so to Bob's credit, and it's, who knows what's going to happen between now and then, and I don't want you as a board that's obviously struggling with this mightily, to lose credibility with this community because you said, we're giving you a flat tax, but whoops, you know, this happened in February, and oh, this is what happened in May, and we open up our tax bills in July and go, that's what, we would, we will understand that, and we will carry that water. But that's, I just, it's a diffi-, I struggled with even making that comment, because as a parent, I want to advocate for more in.
Yeah.
But I don't want you as a board to have a PR narrative that you have to reshape. It's very, it's hard at this point in January, I would humbly suggest.
You know, based on that type of logic, I, maybe the bus should really be seriously considered to be implemented. I don't know if, I mean, I know we can't motion, but vote on that, to really get that in, because that's 83,000 that could go into the fund budget, or programs back in. Yeah.
Perhaps it's a better question for you as a board to consider penalty or no penalty.
Yeah, right, that's what I was just thinking.
And leave the words, leave the words flat tax out of it for the time- And leave the words, leave the words "flat tax" out of it for the time being, so that you as a board would just be comfortable in your own deliberations and could share with the community your thoughts as a result of that vote, and leave the tax conversation for another later date when you have some better numbers.
If you wanted to actually come up with a specific number for, so if you do no penalty, obviously you have a number, if you wanted to do a penalty number, why not use the hundred and seventy-two thousand healthcare number? Say, hey, look, these were our healthcare costs, they went up, we decided to not cut that from our budget, and so we took a penalty, and that was why, and it's a very specific number, it's not gonna change, not tax dependent, it's not in your control, the community would understand that. So I would maybe motion to vote, Brian said penalty, no penalty, but if you're gonna do the penalty, have a specific number that you're associating with that penalty, and I would associate the healthcare number, that's my personal thought.
I think the framing of the issues are spot on, but I'm not prepared to make that value judgment of penalty, no penalty unless I know what I'm getting. Because I do fear the wrath of the taxpayer, and I'm prepared to go against that wrath and be a leader if I know there's a gain and I can't make that assessment in a vacuum.
I don't think any of us want to do that.
So, if the administration comes back and says, this is really important, school board, we need to, we need to build this back in, it's critical for our kids, and you may have to run the risk of a penalty, I'm open to that.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard that yet from the administration.
Well, I don't think Greg would've proposed...
Right, the approach taken by the administration in preparation for this meeting was to reach an, to create a proposal that got us to the no penalty number.
Right.
So, so this proposal would change, it wouldn't change dramatically, but there would be changes in this proposal if, a week ago, the administration was looking at preparing for this meeting so that the budget resulted in a five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar reduction. And it would likely include a recommendation that the school board apply some fund balance, but the proposals would be, would be different to some extent.
Do you need a number vote in order to...
Exactly, thank you, yes, exactly.
I'm trying to get a number.
Could I shop for a possible solution to your journey here? I think, going back to your earlier sequence, I think you need to decide what number you're willing to use in fund balance, vote that and approve that. Once you've done that, I can give you two numbers for a budget to then vote on, one that has no penalty, and one that has calculated tonight a hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents in penalty. And you can vote on either of those two choices, and if you vote on stepping into the penalty by a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, Greg would like an opportunity to come back to you and tell you what he's going to judiciously use that additional sixty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, whatever it is, to, to change his list just a bit. And he could do that at your Tuesday meeting next week. He's not really in a position to entertain a three-hour conversation about it with you because it's, it's allocated about five minutes on your agenda. If he was a board, need to do that, then we need to schedule another meeting between now and the nineteenth, but, so that would be a sequence. Do the fund balance, speak to yourselves and others on your want relative to crossing over into the penalty by a hundred and forty-seven dollars, and go from there.
If we're not gonna take a penalty, the fund balance is moot, and you have to take a hundred and eighty out. So is it penalty, no penalty, and then fund balance? Because have you guys even decided if you're gonna take a penalty?
I think you've got, need to come back to the motion on the table, right now we're talking about taking a penalty, correct?
Yes, although as, as Brian pointed out, there's no second to the motion, so this is all discussion, this is all...
No, there was a second to the motion.
Was there a second?
Kevin's second. So this is all discussion, discussion under the motion.
But this, your, your second motion was the no penalty?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it didn't stipulate the use of the fund balance.
It has, yeah.
It implicitly requires the fund balance to realize the amount of a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Can't get there.
And it's in this budget, budget proposed by Greg. Now, hold on, is the motion on the table, could you give me what you've got, Sandy?
I have Josh making a motion to approve fund, general fund budget for twenty sixteen, seventeen, for sixteen nine fifty-five six thirty-three, and Kevin seconding. That's, that was the motion.
Because implicit in that is a one eighty, is the use of one hundred and eighty, yes. Yep.
And I'll agree with it. I wanna have a discussion about it first, so I can understand what your motion is.
Okay.
Do we know what the taxpayers are gonna think on penalty or no penalty?
Boy, if I did, I could win the lottery, too.
Could I, could I suggest that it's even, it's not even, I would say, that's why I made the point, it's not about penalty, no penalty, would be about what they're gonna see on their bill.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, and that's why I was urging so much caution to say a flat tax, because there is a scenario, if everything stays exactly the way it seems, from here out, there's a scenario, if you adopt the second version, where there would be no difference, we would see no tangible difference on our tax bill in July. That's a long way off.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I think, I don't know if penalty, no penalty is the question, I think it's a question of what's, people are writing their checks for, for next year.
But I do have to say, this isn't the first time we've been through this process, and we kind of come up with these proposed percent increases and decreases, knowing that at some point it's literally out of our control.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm sensitive to, you know, how the community feels about us proposing these, but this is how we've done it year to year, year to year, we, you know, we make our best estimates, knowing the information we have at the time, and propose, you know, fortunately for Williston, it's been the general zero to one percent over the last five to seven years, so...
I just, I think you're obviously under added scrutiny, and it's gonna be a big vote because of the presidential, I mean, I think that's, there's just so many added layers to it, that's all.
Well, not March, March it won't be.
Yeah, well, primaries are in March, but I mean, it's still...
I mean, it'll still be a...
The ballot won't say, the ballot won't say "flat tax."
Clearly.
So I'm confused, so what are we doing now, what are we arguing?
So, so Josh, why don't you explain once again what your, what your intention was in putting this motion out?
My intention was to create a discussion.
Got that.
Just, right, to create the other decision point, right? I proposed initially a decision point where we would run into a penalty phase to preserve our, our fund balance for another year. That was not supported, that failed. So now I'm trying to move in the other direction to see whether we all support the budget proposed by the administration. If there was an amendment to that, I would certainly be open to consideration, and it seems that there's been discussion about potential deviations in the fund balance. That's implicit in my motion, but there's no proposal there, and maybe the thing to do is to table this now, run the risk that we may be, before a special meeting at some point in the near future, and give the administration an opportunity to say, hey, if you're willing to take a small risk on the, either the fund balance or the penalty phase or vote, then I, we can do X, Y, and R C.
And then we'd have that information to be able to...
To juggle.
To juggle.
If, if that's what the body wants. I mean, my, my feeling is, I'm willing to dip into a penalty phase to preserve our options for next year.
And...
But in the absence of some other pointed purpose, I don't think I can support moving into the penalty phase.
And I have to, I have to agree with you, based upon my vote on the previous motion. I, I think it's, I think it's getting extremely difficult here to, to come up with this in between, and it, it's, you know, hard decisions are being made, we have a proposal from the administration that, all in all, I'm, I can support. I need to hear, I need to hear more about what the, what in-between scenario the rest of the board is considering so that we can give some direction, otherwise I would be in favor of not voting for this motion and putting the other one back up, quite honestly.
You mean the original motion about the, accepted as it is, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that we didn't give administration a chance to give us that budget that went into the flat tax, you know? And Greg was going on our guidance to go with the no penalty, and I'm sure that there was a lot of decisions that were made that were the best that he could make, but, you know, we put him in a position of not having the opportunity to go with a different budget that he might feel better about. I think he should have the opportunity to know that we're willing to do a flat tax or whatever it is, whatever amount that we feel is reasonable, and I think we've spoken that we're willing to... So, okay, so, the other proposal that I, that I put out was a number around one hundred thousand dollars.
Of fund balance.
Of fund balance being applied, which would put us in penalty.
I think what Josh and Kevin originally got at, though, is going through and saying, is there actually anything in here that's worth spending that hundred thousand dollars on? Like, yes, we could ask Greg if, you know, he thinks there is, because, you know, you give a kid candy, or you give kid money in a candy store, they're gonna buy candy.
Yeah, although, I mean, I think there is some subtlety to that, and that, and that is to Greg's point, which is, he wouldn't have given us this, this to consider if he had known that we were looking at a number that was different to start.
I do understand that.
Right, yeah, sure.
Right, the two numbers that would be key for the, if the administration needed to do any work beyond this meeting, the, the two key numbers that I would need to leave with were what the final budget number is, and how much fund balance the board is willing to commit.
Right.
That leaves me with an amount to spend, which I will come back...
With proposals.
Would say, hey, I imagine it wouldn't be dramatic changes, because we're not talking about a dramatic amount of money.
Yeah.
But there will be, but I wouldn't be asking if they were significant.
Just so we have all the options, and maybe we're gonna have to have a special meeting, and, you know, these are special times.
There's no maybe, we're rolling to it here, if we don't get somewhere here soon.
To give the administration presents with a third option. I'm not saying I'm supporting, but for having full deliberation on this important issue that we assume a flat, we go into the penalty at a rate that's about the seventeen million ninety-nine thousand figure, with a hundred thousand dollars being allocated towards the fund balance being spent, and, and give us a proposal.
Yep, I like that, I vote for that.
Not saying I support it, but, so that we've considered all our options.
I vote for that.
So, I, I just wonder...
But I don't wanna do that as a motion, because I don't, I don't wanna lock us into a budget item...
A dollar figure.
Tonight. I'm willing to consider other proposals, but I don't want to have locked us in, in the absence of our inability to make a decision at the special meeting into a precise budget item. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I'm gonna read it back to you so I make sure that what he and I turn around and do in the next forty-eight hours is, is in line with what you want done. What I'm hearing is, you'd like Greg and I to develop another scenario that has a one hundred thousand dollar fund balance. The budget number that would be tied to that would actually be seventeen million one ninety-nine, which is a hundred thousand dollars because you're using fund balance. You're using revenue rather than expenditures to get into the reduction.
No, no, it would be six, it would be sixty-five, sixty thousand dollars above that, so it'd be seventeen one...
No, you still, you still have, you were gonna use forty.
Thirty, thirty-six. Well, let me, let me finish with the scenario, and then you can critique it and tell me which one it, it isn't.
Okay.
So my plan would be, he and I work on a hundred thousand dollars fund balance, a seventeen million one ninety-nine budget, that, that ties to a, whatever language we wanna use, but it's planned flat tax, or into the penalty, a moderate amount, whatever language we wanna use, I would calculate based on being flat taxed with the numbers that I've got.
Right.
And that would afford Greg about another additional sixty thousand dollars with which to play with this list and determine what is the right thing to leave on it and leave off.
I'm not understanding the, the hundred added into the total.
Yeah, I think you're just adding sixty into it, because there's already forty thousand in fund balance.
Well, not really, not really, because it's five thirty-five, and...
No, not really, it's right, Your Honor. It, it, it is, if you're using a hundred thousand dollars of revenue to accomplish the same thing this describes, that you're doing it all with expenditures, you get to add in the hundred thousand dollars of expenditures.
Right, but if you're only doing sixty more, wouldn't you add just sixty?
That's...
Because the seven, the seventeen...
I'm not using sixty, I'm using, you are using a hundred thousand dollars of fund balance that Mr. Mason didn't have in this scenario.
My understanding is that the seventeen million ninety-nine thousand budget presumes a forty thousand dollar fund balance.
No, line four does not include any fund balance.
Ah.
Line four on the air.
No, there was a hundred...
No, 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 I think we made an assumption, folks, and I, and I'm gonna call it my fault, because if you look at the difference, the reduction numbers between no penalty and flat taxes, that's a hundred forty-three thousand dollar difference, so we made the assumption, we were gonna get that out, of, the difference and everything came out to be a difference in fund balance.
Wait, wait, no, this is too confusing for me, because when I see, when I see what, what, what Greg just took us through, right, it adds up to six seventy, six hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. Are we okay?
Yeah.
Am I saying it right?
Yes, with a hundred eighty thousand of fund balance, that's Greg's sheet.
Right.
Yep.
So, that number correlates to your top box of six hundred and seventy-eight nine hundred and fifty-two. So you're telling me that, even though that number corresponds to this number, it did not include the one hundred and eighty that are added?
No.
It is exactly the same number. What you're proposing to do with Greg's sheet is get all but a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars accomplished with budget reductions, and a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars accomplished with revenue.
Right.
To the extent you accomplish covering that gap with revenue, you can't take it out of the expenditure budget. It isn't an expenditure reduction, it's a revenue increase.
So then, so the no penalty number is exactly how you explained it, Your Honor, but, but it does incorporate that hundred and eighty thousand dollars of fund balance. Now, if you go down to the second line, where it has a five hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollar reduction?
Yeah.
That is assuming no application of fund balance.
Right, but I'm just pointing at the fact that the top box also, line four says, does not include any fund balance, so maybe it's just a typo and it should've been caught out of that box, but, you know?
Is that correct, Bob? That that five hundred thirty-five thousand, five eighty-five reduction does not include the use of any fund balance?
Correct, and the six seventy-eight up top includes no use of fund balance.
No, wait.
That's what it says, does not include any fund balance.
Right, but it does, but it's in the six seventy-eight that you, that Greg just presented.
Bob, I think what you did is you, I think, and I'm, I just don't think you added in the fund balance in your revenue line. I think it's included at the top number to get to the reductions, because your, your revenue lines are the same in both. I just, and I could be totally wrong, and tell me that I am, I just don't know that you put...
Now you're flipping over the page, the revenue?
Nope, I'm right, no, no, I'm right here, I'm right here. The revenue lines in both, no penalty and flat tax are exactly the same.
They're the same, yeah.
Correct, and they both don't include any...
But one includes fund balance, and one...
No, neither. Because they're, the expenditure and the revenue are different items, completely separate, which is why we vote on them also separately.
Right, so then just please, I guess what I'm asking is to, where the six seventy-eight...
I was, I was asked how much Greg needs to reduce his expenditure budget to get no penalty. If we're doing it all on the expenditure budget, he needs to make a recommendation or a list of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of reductions. He's not provided you that. He's provided you a list of four ninety-eight reductions and a grab of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue. that is different than what I gave him and what he delivered. I can work with the change, but.
I got it.
Okay, so, well, again, if you, if you narrow the conversation on fund balance and then give me some degree of comfort that what you want Greg and I to do is take that fund balance you've just decided and craft a budget that gets you at, in the neighborhood of a flat tax year to year, we can do that. He's going to add in or adjust his expenditure plan by the $60,000.
So, if I understand, I'll play a small part of the backseat, obviously. I think I understand that.
We have 678.
The flat tax numbers here. The expenditure budget of 17,99,000 from the 535,585,000 reduction
I don't get this.
That is a number we give to Greg, has nothing to do with use of fund balance.
That's expenditures, if you did it all on expenditures, that's what he would have to reduce.
Right. If we grant him, for example, my grant him, but if we, if we propose using an, besides that, an additional 100,000. Dollars in fund balance, aren't we then in effect saying his reduction back to us would be 435,585?
Exactly.
Does everybody get that? That's a big swing from 678,952 down to 435.
Okay, and then pull out Greg's sheet. He's giving you expenditures of 498.
Exactly.
Only asking him to do 435.
So, the difference here is, is the top one and the bottom one, with taking fund balance out of it is 498 versus 535. You take the fund balance out of the equation. So, they're almost, you know, if you don't spend as, the irony is, I guess, or the understanding is, is if you don't spend the, the fund balance, you get the flat tax. Right, because we're at $36,000 difference, we thought, but let's not go there with that number because it gets confusing. Okay? So, to Bob's point, really, it's how much, you know, how much, to Greg's point, he's saying, well, wait a minute, now, now you got me a 535,585, which is different than 496, whatever it was before fund balance. And if you give me a little bit more, I probably can do a little bit more with it.
That will throw us into the penalty, flat tax option.
It'll, it'll throw us into a penalty, doesn't necessar, the number doesn't necessarily equal flat tax. It's close, and it's not even what we were talking about before, but we, we're gonna come up with $100,000. That number is gonna affect this number too. And so, it's not gonna be exact, which goes to Brian's point, that I don't think we necessarily talk about flat tax, we talk about what we want to do with our budget. It puts us into penalty, it's what we want to do to support our school system, that's why we're doing it.
Can I ask Bob and the board a question? Can the board vote to approve a budget amount of 17,99,000 tonight? And let me know that, okay, that's the budget amount that we're gonna authorize being spent. And you can use, you can apply up to $100,000 in fund balance in order to get there. And then I would work with the leadership team to put that together. Does that make sense?
Uh, no. Because I don't have any budget here.
Well, you'd have the 17,99,000.
I don't have a document that, that corresponds, that's a number.
It doesn't have, yeah.
What do you mean you don't?
But you can do, you could make as many budgets as you wanted, oh, you know. You could make one at $10,000, $20,000 increments.
He's gotta eat, sleep.
Well, I mean, reasonable, right?
Trust me, trust me with this one, if your intent is to apply $100,000 of fund balance, provide Greg additional room to reassess his list to the tune of about $60,000, then you would be warning a budget at 17,199,000.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
17 million.
17,199.
See, the hundred goes up.
Not 190, not 17,099.
Because we have to separately warn the $100,000 fund balance.
You are going to separately warn the fund balance decision, if you have one, yes.
So, if you think about it from a taxpayer standpoint, we're gonna have a line item that says, we'd like you to approve 17,199. We would like to approve using $100,000 of the fund balance to reduce that amount. We would like you to keep the rest of the fund balance for future use. That's what we're saying to the taxpayer.
And if I just ask one question, that means this, there were some typos in this, like, when we say that the budget would have been seven, the flat tax would be 17,099 with those reductions, that's a typo.
That's not a typo. That's exactly what was, what Bob wrote the numbers up for, because we didn't, in that scenario, no fund balance was gonna be applied.
Okay.
But see, what we're saying is we would be willing to apply that extra $100,000, which would bring the budget up $100,000, but we would offset it, the fund balance.
Yeah, the, the danger is, this is.
I know.
If there's a smile on anybody's face, the danger is, I, I have to be very specific in the, the assumptions I use on those, so we don't get tangled up like this when you all think they're a little bit different. So, that's why it's explicit. Those two samples said, we're getting all our work done by cutting budget.
Yep.
So, that we didn't get tangled up with this complication between revenue and expenditures.
Which is, which went back to my original statement, which is that I'm inclined to vote one or the other, but not something in between.
So.
If I may just say, you know, I may just not be understanding the numbers, but when I just apply basic math and I just take a look at your 69,55 and take a look at what's present, what was presented today, again, for the 678,952, which in fact included $180,000 of use of balance of the fund balance, right? And then you tell me that that scenario did not include the fund balance, that just doesn't, I can't, I don't compute, it just doesn't work.
No, that did include the fund balance.
Well, no, Bob said it didn't.
No, no, so.
Well, it's because.
Can I take a stab at this, Bob?
Bob's number on this page did not include the fund balance. Greg's obviously did on this page because he couldn't get to 678 in expenditures reduction. He had to use fund balance, so they are distinctly different.
Okay, and that's the 36,000.
Exactly, my point.
There's no proposal, proposal from Greg that supports this reduction.
Correct.
Okay. What would happen is, this number, if we adopted the proposal as presented, this number would go up by 180,000 and then the revenue would go up by 180,000.
Right, if you had, if you had the top one, agreed to what Greg said, I would have said, timeout. The budget I want you to vote is 69, 16,955, 678, plus 180, or 17,135, 633, so.
Yes.
Now, all.
It'd be offsetting revenue.
Right.
It's very tricky that this number matched up with this number, but so.
It's not tricky at all.
It almost made you think that they were in sync, but they really weren't.
Well, and what I would just say, maybe for the future, with all due respect, then, let's not present numbers that don't align.
Yeah, you guys need to be.
I'm sorry.
The papers need to be. It's a, it's a true semantic, they do align, but they don't make necessarily. Josh, I think we had a.
When, when we align, we'll have the same story.
We.
So, can we, can we table my motion to allow the administration to come back with a third proposal for our consideration at a special meeting to be warned next week or later this week?
You, you need to pull that off sometime between now and the end of this week.
Yep.
Because we, we have to have you finish.
And take action on it on Tuesday.
So, I mean, unless we're, unless, we rejected my initial motion, it doesn't sound like we have support for the, the motion that's on the table, absent further consideration. So, we gotta schedule a special meeting, get the third option on the table, and make some decisions.
Unless we make an amendment to this motion, unless, unless there's a comfort level at or around $100,000 of fund balance use, which is the.
You can try to put the buses in.
So, I, I will tell you right now, I do not support that in a vacuum. I would need an actual proposal, and I won't vote in favor of that. So, that's, that's, for a straw poll, that's where I'm at.
Then that's where I'm at.
Okay. Then, I want to be clear what our direction to administration is after this, because we've just, because now we're, you know, I want to make sure we have, after having spent a good significant amount of time trying to make our best understanding of this, what our expectation of administration and leadership team is so that we can come back at the end of this week and make a, and make a quick, informed decision.
So, I just want to put this out there, so if we're not comfortable going to 100,000 in fund balance without knowing specifically what we're adding back in, then.
Yeah, what exactly are we?
Then what are we waiting for? Because the, the read we gave the administration from our last meeting on December 21st was we universally were uncomfortable with the fifth grade foreign language, world language, or most of us were uncomfortable with the world language. And so, you went back to the table, took care of that, and we didn't give you any other feedback on anything else. So, you know, given that and given, you know, it's really about the 180, can we live with that and let's just, you know, why are we going back to the table? I, I guess I'm just throwing that out there.
I, I tend to agree.
That's what I was trying to get at earlier, like, what here are we uncomfortable enough with that we need to send Greg back to say?
Because we should have given that message on December 21st, I think. And when we, we gave him a, a clear direction on the world language, the fifth grade world language, and we didn't give clear direction on anything else. We, we, we really didn't say, no, this is an absolute no way kind of thing, so.
Can I point out, and Kevin, I don't know your last name, indicated that there were certain parts of this budget that said no impact. And you elicited at least three that I can recall that had actual impact. Perhaps you can ask the leadership team to look at the, the ones that stated there was impact to students and teachers and human beings.
Yeah, that would be my specific direction, is to say whatever's gonna impact the classroom the most.
Or, no, I think Brian's getting more specifically at, what line, and Karen, what line items on here do we want to tell Greg?
I would, I would rather us not go there, honestly, I would rather know what the target number is. And so that, because this is all part of a.
It's a holistic.
Yeah.
Right, because we knew we had to get to a certain number. So, I would like to sit with the leadership team again with another number in front of us. And even if, I understand if it's a smaller range, if this, if the school board has to give me a, a range, then I would come back with, well, here's our recommendation to hit within that range, and this is, this is the recommendation.
And you, you don't want to make a decision without understanding, but it seems to me that the.
I, I can make a decision right now. I will not support going into the penalty phase without knowing what I'm getting for it. And I will vote for the motion that I have in place. Because I, to Karen's point, I think we, we did examine this. We made some value judgments at the last meeting, wanted world language back in, we got that proposal. I would prefer to save our money for a rainy day which is coming next year, but there's not support for that. So, I will support the current budget as proposed. That's my position.
One thing there were, to try and get world language back in, and after CSSU made assessment adjustments, there were other changes to line items on here, like, they did increase the number of TAs reduced. So, I'm still trying to get a, can we, can we look back through here and say, are there glaring things like world language, for instance, before, like, that stand out here? And Josh, I'm sorry, not Josh, I'm pointing to Kevin's, Kevin pointed out three. He said the full elementary school teacher, the third grade, third, fourth.
Yeah, just as examples.
The 3.6 teaching assistance, and then the custodial staff. Like, are there other things like that that we're really not uncomfortable with, we want?
Right, but the, so the, the three, four teacher, though, is following the reduction at the one, two level. I mean, that, that is all about.
That's fine, but I think that Greg should have the opportunity.
It's all about the number of students.
I think we've heard from the, a, a group of teachers and representatives from a, that's familiar with what's going on and I assume have had time to take a look at the budget and the impacts it's gonna make and are involved in it and came here and told us that they don't think we should do it. And so, I don't think it's too much for me to come to another meeting to, you know, see what administration comes up with. And yeah, maybe, you know, we should have figured it out earlier and everything, but this isn't a regular year, so let's have another meeting, let's give administration another stab. And, you know, I, I honestly would feel fine letting Greg make the decisions on the $100,000, but I feel like I need to represent my voters and I think that probably the majority of them wouldn't be too happy about that. So, you know, I think it's, I'm gonna trust what he decides and, and just give him another, another chance.
If we're talking about line items, I have a sticky point with the teaching assistance, that's if you look at total teaching assistance that have been reduced, you're looking at 3.6 teaching assistance, you're looking at 0.8 library assistant, you said those are all counted under the assistance.
But not the total number he gave you, though, the 14?
14 included all of them.
I don't think any.
He's 16 with the library assistant.
Right.
Okay, so 14, but still 3.6, that's almost a quarter. That's a lot, that's a huge reduction. So, that's a particular line item that if Greg is gonna go back and look at anything, I would like you to look at that, Greg.
And I would support that information to make a judgment. And be willing to table this and to meet again Friday, so we have all the options in front of us.
If I could ask, so no one tabled a motion to vote on the buses, it seemed, and, and I live outside of that range, plus my kids get driven to school every day. Is there, is there an appetite for really doing a vote on the buses? I, I don't know what everyone, what all the parents and all the taxpayers would think of it. Eighty-six thousand dollars, it is money, it, it's half the fund balance-ish what we're thinking of putting in there. I'm just curious if it's something that we might wanna, if we're gonna get something done, is it worthwhile?
It might be a cryptic answer, but I would have to say, assuming that there hasn't been a lot of discussion and throw of it by the board nor has there been a motion put forward right now, I don't think the board is comfortable with it. That's my opinion of the.
Well, why don't we put it up for a vote?
Because we've got a motion on the table we have to dispense with first.
Okay, well, I'll just take care of that.
So, we need to either table it, amend it, or vote on it.
So, what's the vote again?
The vote would be to accept the no penalty budget as proposed.
Who have to call the question?
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify with an i. I would have to say that the nays have it. So, we have no motion on the table, we have no budget proposed. How would we like to proceed?
I think what we talked about a lot already is to allow, to, to assign a number, right? I personally would like to propose a 17,99. Because at this point in time, based on the information that we have, that would, in theory, with the information that we have currently, make us vote yes within the penalty box, but again, with the information we have right now, we, we would basically need a flat tax for our constituents.
So, we're basically with.
But we have to just talk about the.
Could we do a straw poll whether we're prepared to have a special meeting later this week and give the administration an opportunity to make a proposal to us? I would support that.
I would support that too.
Can budget buddies attend?
I would, I would support that under, under the, I would support that under the assumption, as long as we give some specific directions so that Greg can give us some good specific proposals. So, we need to talk about how much fund balance that means to us, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And I thought there was some consent, I thought if I could distill our conversations, there was not consensus for the proposal, but for the information based upon a, Bob, correct me if I botch this one, effectively a $60,000 increase.
Yes.
In, in the fund balance.
That's, that's what he and I think you're saying.
So, I'm, so I'm comfortable with that too.
Okay.
So, I don't think we need to make a motion or anything.
No.
We're just gonna.
But we need to schedule a special meeting.
We need to schedule a special meeting and continue, because all the action items we have here, we have not acted on them, we need to get that done.
Can we, can we clarify that 60,000, I think Greg said up to 60,000? We, he doesn't have to spend the $60,000 fund balance, that's not what we're telling him to do, right?
We're giving him a maximum.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I have no problem if Greg comes back and doesn't want to spend it all.
I think that's a really good point.
But I don't have a problem if he comes back and does spend it all. I think I want to, I think I want to ask the board one more thing before we proceed here. Do we or do we not want to put forward any discussion, further discussion or motion on the bus issue? My impression is that there's not an interest to, to do so. So, I'm, I'm not necessarily asking for the motion, but I just want to make sure that.
I, I, maybe I'm myopic on this, but I really feel like saving our fund balance for next year is really important. And if that meant, maybe it's six. year is really important, and if that meant, maybe it's six or one half, it doesn't matter, because we'll be able to cut, we'll have the option to cut the bus next year.
Yeah, save it for, figure out, do a study, look into it, talk about.
If we're going to go that deep, I'd rather save that for year two.
So it's the same issue.
Yeah.
Having options.
All right, thank you. Okay. Bring us back to the agenda, which we pretty much blown to heck and gone. That's fine. So, really, here's where we're at. We, we've, we're going to continue our discussion, so our agenda really isn't going to change for, to the next meeting. We need to establish a time tonight to meet. We will take back up this budget work session under discussion when we meet again, and continue through the action matters that are here on this agenda.
Can we discuss when we want to schedule this meeting?
Yes, we need to do that. We need to do that. I think, do we have everybody here who needs to?
Can I just ask for one more?
Absolutely.
Question, I just want to make sure I got, I understand this correctly. The school board is, I'm looking at spending $17,199,000 while applying $100,000 in fund balance.
That is, that is.
Considering, right?
That's, that's what I, that's how I understand it.
Considering, spending, right? Or will.
There's no motion, so.
Oh, right.
Use whatever words you want. That's, that's the direction we're giving them.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Okay, yes, that's, that is the will of the board, yes.
Okay.
Greg and I are clear.
Thank you. Okay, let's, yeah, so let's, let's establish a time we can meet, and then we will adjourn this meeting until that time.
So we need at least 24 hours, right, to run a special meeting?
Yes, we do.
And we need to get the administration some time to. With its leadership team.
They'd probably prefer that.
Friday.
Are there any space limitations to the cafeteria here, or the dining room?
We can figure that out, we'll find a space.
Meet at McGillicuddy's.
That would be nice.
Very. But you've got to get a second. We're not going to land back.
You've got a back room.
I can tell you personally, Friday's real tough for me. Thursday would be preferred, but.
For me, too, if I can add, I'm traveling.
But I don't know where you guys are at.
You're, you're not planning to take any action at that meeting, or you could structure it that way, so that you can vote the articles Tuesday night when you're together?
We could do that, absolutely.
We just can't debate to anywhere near this length of time next Tuesday night.
No, we cannot. I think.
So, the first opening I would have would be Wednesday afternoon, if that works. I have to be at a St. George Board meeting at about 5:00 that evening.
No, I can't meet before 5:00 on Wednesday.
We already have a 4:30 meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, this is. Can we do morning meetings?
Can we do morning meetings, given the assignment? I don't know how you feel about this, Josh.
Thursday morning? I could do a really early, I mean, don't we need to schedule another meeting anyway?
We have, we have a meeting Wednesday afternoon, a special board meeting already, right?
But there's a quorum already.
Yes, so we're set with that. But we can't meet at that time.
Right.
I could do, I could do, we could do morning meetings, if it's early.
Thursday morning? I could, I could do.
There's FAP Advisory Thursday morning.
There's what?
FAP Advisory Council, starts at 15:15, goes to 10:30-ish.
What about Friday morning?
Javon is not here.
Oh, you're not here?
No, I am here in the morning.
Okay. I'm available Friday morning.
I could do Friday morning.
No, I'm fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Good as any other day.
Friday, 7:30?
Mm-hmm. 7:30? Wow, pretty early.
That probably be due.
Absolutely.
Greg, if I could ask, when you come back, could you also reconsider, you know, some kind of partial cut in, in the principal's office, whether it's 0.2? Since, since we're asking him to go off and reconsider stuff, right?
You're asking, but the board needs to ask him. So I'm just going to throw this out here right now, that that's not something that I think is, I think we had a long discussion on that earlier.
What was it? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Request, a request to look at a reduction in funding.
Question was, right, we're cutting 0.2 FTE, 0.1 FTE here, is there, if Greg and the administration, have they really considered, or would they reconsider that at the, in the principal's office? Right, is that 480,000 on the line item?
Well, that's basically their salary plus some amount of money.
Just like, everything else is all people's salaries. I understand that. It's all difficult.
No, it's their time, there's a, there's a.
What do you mean? It's the same thing.
So, let me just reiterate my position on that. And I felt like we made a decision.
I do, too.
We're going to seriously look at the staffing levels of our administration, but we're not going to make a decision in this budget cycle, and that we'll put it into our working calendar for the spring, so that we can give it all the due diligence that it needs.
Remodel it. So I understand that, and I was just asking the administration if they internally would consider it, and maybe they come up with a recommendation, right? That's.
I, I, I hear you. I, I personally don't want to task the administration with that, because I think it's a more complex analysis that will divert them from.
Okay.
But I, I understand why you're asking. I'm not sure.
All right, so are we at consensus for Friday morning at 7:30?
Work your magic.
So because it's 7:30.
By the way, if it needed, if we could do eight, that'd be great by me, but.
Well, with the trip, the arrival of school, so we have.
We have buses.
From 7:50 to 8:05, it's a very busy place, right, you know, right around here. So, and then location might have to be different.
That's fine.
If we're talking during the school day. And I'm, I assume we can find a space, but during school is going to be a little trickier.
I think we should just do 7:30 and do it here.
But I think he's saying that this room may be busy.
Well, it's just going to be.
No, it's.
You'll have, you'll have arrival procedures right here.
Right.
There's City Hall, there's the fire station, there's the library, there's plenty of other public spaces that we can utilize.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, we can do it here and pull the shades.
I was just going to say, we can just pull the shades, right?
All right.
Yeah, I'm used to working in really loud places, that bothered me.
What?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So we're planning on here, is that?
Here.
Okay.
As long as it's available, Greg will let us know.
And, and here's the easy way to look at it. It's going to be.
Motivating.
Yeah, well, no, it's going to be that, but if it's not here, it'll probably be some other place in this building, so if you come here at 7:30 on Friday, it'll either be someone or a note on the door.
And it'll be warned ahead of time.
Yeah, and we have to warn it, so we're going to know.